You can say morning back, it's okay.
Morning.
Thank you. Sidebar is over. Roll call.
Thank you. Chair Bone?
I'm here.
Supervisor Bushnell? Supervisor Wilson?
Presente.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
And Supervisor Madron?
Present.
Salute to our flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to change anything?
Yes, sir. Item D-13 is being pulled from the consent calendar and will return at a later date.
And I would like to pull D-3, please.
Anybody else want to pull anything? All right. With that, we'll move to our consent calendar. Any public comment on the consent calendar?
Again, item D-3 has been pulled from consent and will be heard after consent.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Ken Swawski, thank you for my opportunity to speak on your consent. One of the topics on here were your travel expenses. And in my opinion, justifiably, two of you have exceeded your use for travel and two have quite a bit left in your accounts, as far as I can tell, if you look at the amount of travel expenses there. I strongly support you having separate travel expenses where the people from outlying distances get more money to do the travel expense. Kind of a little history of what goes on there. Frequently, it's, you know, $500 difference. And I really would like to see those people have extra money in their accounts so that they can do the travel that's necessary in their districts. So reapportioning that would be probably in everybody's best interest. Also, there was another topic on here, I think it was 19, working with the Hoopah Tribe, if I recall. Anything we can do to work with our tribe is always fantastic. And so anyway, those are the... I did have a question. I made a comment to somebody, I think, up there regarding 18. There's an increase in ambulance service fees. And I did notice, it looks like the fee increase is being passed on to 10% of the people in the county rather than everybody out there. Again, ambulance, I think we should be hitting up the state for money because the ambulance services does a lot of its honor highways and they don't seem to really contribute. But that did... I had a little question. You guys probably ran across that also, where people who don't have insurance and have to pay for their own, don't have any subsidy, are going to be the ones who bear this total increase for the rest of the county. That might not be equity and parity in this world. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on your consent items today.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, anybody on the...
No.
I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. In regards to the monthly expense accounts for board members, I wanted to point out that I chose not to go to CSAC this year. And this doesn't show on these individual accountings. We actually allocate approximately $3,000 per board member to attend the California State Association of Counties. I chose to forego doing that so that I could meet the travel needs in my district. So if you add that $3,000 in, I'm still $1,500 or more under budget. So it's important to understand the total budget, but I understand for the public, that's not actually included in the report. So I just want to make that clear. But I made the choice to stay in my district and serve those constituents.
I did too. Me too.
But... All right.
Did we move consent?
Wait for motion.
I move consent, removing D-13 and D-3.
Seconded.
They moved and seconded?
Okay, just one second, sorry.
Nikki?
Yep, I'm good now.
Sorry.
Thank you. That's okay. Chair Bone?
Sure.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yeah.
And Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
All right. Now, we will go to things pulled from the consent calendar. Scott, do we take those individually or can we take those together?
Well, one was canceled.
Oh, 13 was... So just D-3, D, excuse me. Yeah, D-3 then. D-13 is continued. You're right. I'm sorry. All right. So Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as we all know, there's a lot of conflict on the planet. That's nothing new. And there's a lot of conflict in the Middle East. And I thought it was important for this board to at least make a statement about peace. This isn't trying to take sides or to stir up any controversy or problem. It's simply a statement of peace. So I'll go ahead and read that resolution, and then I'm sure there'll be some comments. This is a resolution for peace in response to the Middle East crisis. Whereas the County of Humboldt has an important and longstanding history of supporting peace and diplomatic solutions to international conflicts. And whereas there has been intolerable innocent death and destruction in the Middle East before and since October 7th, 2023. And whereas Humboldt County is a community that rejects violence, hate speech, and racism of any kind. And whereas Humboldt County is a community that embraces and supports peace, justice, and respect for all. And whereas there has been far too much division in our community, now therefore be it resolved that the County of Humboldt does hereby support an immediate, mutual, and permanent ceasefire and total cessation of violence by all parties involved, a mutual exchange of all hostages and civilian political prisoners, unrestricted delivery of humanitarian assistance and restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to Gaza, mutual respect for international law, and reinvigorated diplomacy to develop a permanent, just solution to the conflict and lasting peace in the region. Now therefore be it resolved that a copy of this resolution is sent to the Office of President Joe Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris, Governor Gavin Newsom, Senator La Ponce, Butler, Senator Alex Padilla, Representative Jared Huffman, State Senator Mike McGuire, Assembly Member Jim Wood, urging them to take immediate action to use their position and influence to end the violence and take significant steps towards peace in the region. And, you know, I know that Humboldt County is a small little piece in this overall puzzle and probably will have, this resolution would have probably very little impact on what's going on one way or another. But I thought it was important for us to at least make a statement. So that's the statement. And this is identical to the resolution passed by the City of Arcata a month or so ago. So that's why I put it here on the agenda, was just to try and make a statement for peace and hope that we can all find common ground together and not be so divisive, not just in the Middle East, but all over the world, including here and our own community. So that's the motivation behind this. And I look forward to public comment and board comment as well.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board. Is there any public comment on this item?
Hi. My name is John Webb. I live in Trinidad. And I want to, first of all, thank Supervisor Madron for bringing this resolution forward and in anticipation, hopeful anticipation that you're going to pass it. I want to thank all of the members of the Board of Supervisors that vote for its passage. And yes, we're a little tiny county in a remote place, very far away from the conflict, but we do pay taxes. My taxes go to buy the bombs that are dropped on the civilian population of Gaza. So I think it's important that we do what we can. And this is what we can do. It may not be a whole lot, but it is something. And years from now, when this is all said and done, and your grandkids and your kids maybe are asking you, well, what did you do when that was going on? You can say that you voted for peace in the Middle East. Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to its passage.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joanne McGary. I came down here on bus from Arcata because of this particular item on the agenda. I was one of the people very involved in getting the Arcata, City of Arcata council members to pass this ceasefire resolution. In fact, the resolution that was passed actually had a different title. And I would suggest that maybe that title be the title of your resolution. And it was a resolution of the City of Arcata, of the City Council of the City of Arcata calling for ceasefire in the Israel-Palestine conflict. I think it's kind of important that that specificity be made because the resolution really is about that specific place in the Middle East. Where's my time? Oh, there we go. Okay, so I really appreciate this body considering this and hopefully passing this because it is beyond just a statement from a little rural town in Northern California. You know, we are joining the many that have done similar resolutions. And it's really, really important to those of us who really want peace in the world that our representatives respect that and help us move in that direction. So I really applaud you for putting this resolution on the agenda. Please pass it. Think about changing the title of it like the City of Arcata did. And I've been thinking about Pete Seeger a lot lately. A friend of mine just wrote a book about Pete Seeger. And I'm trying to get him to come here and talk about it and sing about it. And what Pete Seeger was really great at, was really great at, was using music to get the message out. So I'm going to close with a little passage from a song Pete sang all the time. Last night I had the strangest dream I've ever dreamed before. I dreamed that all the world had said to put an end to war. Please join in the movement. Ceasefire in Gaza and in all of Palestine. Thank you.
Hi, I am Shannon Townsend-Bettis. I live here in Eureka. And I wanted to extend my gratitude to each and every one of you for putting this on the agenda. It's, I don't know the word for it, but it's a little silly to be considering something going on in foreign relations here at our county up in Northern California. But that's where we're at right now because of the failure of our federal leaders to actually do something and put an end to this horrific war. Americans overwhelmingly support a ceasefire on both sides of the aisle. This is, there are like no words to describe the images and the videos that we are seeing right now with our eyes on social media of children. It's an industrial slaughter of children, okay? And it's affecting a lot of us very much. And I really just want it to end. And we want it to end now. And we know it's not going to end because it's in contradiction with U.S. foreign policy. I think each and every one of you are very smart politicians, and you know that. Our foreign politicians do this for a reason. And it's not for the American people. It's for the interests of special corporations and special interests that really run the way things are happening. So this is why it's coming up here at the local level. There are over 17,000 orphans in Gaza. Seventeen thousand orphans and counting in Gaza. There are over 10,000 dead children in Gaza. Thirty-seven mothers are slaughtered each and every day in Gaza. I'm bringing this around with me to keep this at the forefront of our understanding. I think this is an unprecedented time in history. It's a watershed moment. The world is changing really fast right now. We're going from becoming a unipolar world to a multipolar world. And the U.S. is losing their bricks right now because China is powerful. And this has everything to do with what's happening in the Middle East and why we won't stop sending weapons to Israel because they are our U.S. Air Force Base in Israel. We all know that. So I just wanted to say that here. I want to continue to support peace in the Middle East. I mean, at this point, I don't even care what the title says at this point. The fact that you're saying something and putting that message out there, I'm just so thankful because it's just unexplainable what is happening there. Unexplainable. They're destroying their environment. They're destroying their schools, their houses, their water wells. I mean, it is ethnic cleansing, total genocide. Our country has a history of that. We've acknowledged that here. It's time to acknowledge that that's what's happening there. So thank you. Please pass this message. Please pass this resolution.
Thank you.
Hello there. Natalie Rex, hello. My name is Luta Belcher. I'm a lifelong resident of Humboldt County. I was born in Arcata. I also have the unique privilege to be a Hebrew, and I lived in Israel. I happened to live there in 2005 when the Israeli government withdrew from its occupation of Gaza since 1967. I saw the communities, the Jewish communities that were removed, who asked to stay in Gaza but were not welcomed by the leadership. I was also there when Hamas was elected to power in 2005. In never, 2007, excuse me. There's never been an election in Gaza since then. We could have the horrors of war brought before us. Rockets have flown into Israel since they withdrew in 2005, to the point when I heard, I was in Arcata celebrating Simchat Torah with my community, when I was told about the horrors of October 8th, to the point I didn't even react because we're so used to having attacks in Israel. My family live in the area right near the Gaza border, who are soldiers fighting in the reserve units. My friends, I respect your care, and I respect my community members' care. But I have seen this region. What we're dealing with is a crisis of our civilization. How many peace resolutions have we passed here? Do we pass one in Ukraine? I've been to the Ukraine, my friends. Did we pass one there too? Why don't we have a peace resolution there as well? War is horrific. Who would not agree with this? But let's keep in mind what we're dealing with here. Hamas is an organization that has sworn to destroy the Jewish people and Israel. Make no doubt about it. Israel should be commended for its virtue in the way it's executed this, not condemned. Our peace proposal doesn't mention the return of the hostages that were taken, including American citizens. These people just want the bodies of their relatives to cry out loud. We got to continue. Again, I commend you on wanting peace, and I commend these people for their feelings. I don't think they understand exactly what they're talking about. And as far as genocide goes, I think they should look up the definition. Other my quote that was attributed to Leo Strauss, it was given by Barry Goldwater, I will remind you that extremism in the defense of liberty is no virtue, is no vice. And let me remind you also that moderation in the pursuit of justice is no virtue. Keep in mind what the pieces we want and what we're dealing with, what is at stake. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Swawski, I support as titled and as written. I think peace is something we should strive for, as mentioned before, Ukraine. There's all kinds of other countries that are in war. Mother Nature, I think, is kind of... Maybe if she created us, not too happy with us. We don't seem to learn from our prior mistakes. You'd think by now we could get beyond and be intelligent enough to go without these kind of situations and all play well in the sandbox. But I don't see that happening. It seems the opposite seems to be happening. It's getting worse. I do feel that everybody, through your voice and through our voices, should all speak up regarding peace in general. It's imperative because otherwise we as a race will cease to exist on this planet. We have the capability right now of totally eliminating the human race. And that's a possibility at all times. So until we get beyond that and we grow up and quit being ignorant little children who are selfish and bullies in the sandbox, we're in for a very long hard road. So thank you for doing this. I wanted to thank you so much. I do understand the different perspectives on these things. But I think we all can agree that this should end. Any kind of war should end. Any kind of death, we should be smart enough to get beyond. But for some reason, we are a very stupid race. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Sure. Mr. Rose Wilson?
Yeah. Thank you. Well, I supported this resolution in the language that was brought for my community in Arcata. I still support it. I support the process that the community went through to get to that space, was, or to that place. I'm amenable to changes that were suggested in relation to the title. But it's not a, it's, it's, I'm not going to hold on that one. If another couple of supervisors want to make that change, I'm okay with that. But and I'm happy to make the resolution to support. Make the motion, yes. Oh, sorry. Make the, make the motion to support the resolution. Thank you.
I'll second the motion. Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I do appreciate the opportunity to, to speak up for values of peace. I appreciate that the resolution that was essentially very carefully developed in Arcata with a lot of community input is something that, you know, we can use moving forward. And it does refer to return of all hostages and prisoners who have been taken in this conflict. So I appreciate that as well. So I will say there's thousands of years of history that I can't frankly begin to understand or empathize with from personal experience, but I am doing my best to learn. And this is a time when, you know, world, world history is incredibly complex, to say the least, and particularly this part of the world. And I'm learning a lot right now, really seeking to educate myself. So if community members are hearing this and have resources, they'd like to share them open to that. And I've talked to a few people in the community about their perspectives on this and, you know, feel comfortable with the language that's been presented. But I also understand that there's a lot of pain and frustration amongst members of our own community that, you know, I don't think this fully captures the full breadth of people's perspectives or feelings about it. But it, I believe it's a fairly content neutral but important statement to make.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Thank you for that, Supervisor Arroyo. I am going to be abstaining from this vote. I also feel that, you know, I support the peace statement absolutely, but think that it doesn't capture everything. And, and not, I'm not abstaining because I don't agree with the peace statement. It's just, like Supervisor Arroyo said, there's a lot of history and a lot to know and a lot to learn. And I just wanted to explain what my abstention would be for.
Anything else, Supervisor Madron?
And I appreciate this and all the time and work. And it seems, and I'm in a conflict because I brought something forward on the Ukraine, that that's because Russia was going after the Ukraine. I felt a little bit. I don't, I, I'll vote for this for no other reason, but there isn't anything you can stick your fork into on this. This is probably one of the most benign statements that we don't, we want peace. We want all the hostages to go home. We don't want, we want them all to play nice. And, I mean, it's, it's as much tapioca as I can see here, just saying. And it's, it's the normal things. Don't kill other people. Play nice. Follow the rules. Let everybody go home. So I'll vote for it just for the fact is, it doesn't push me either way. So I won't vote against it because I don't feel strongly enough against it to vote against it. And I like it just the way it's written because it doesn't. And I do like the, I like the two points of view that were brought forward. I like that there was, that there was a, because there's, there's a lot more to this picture. We can all beat our drums and think that we're going to solve it. But I, I'm pretty sure Mr. Netanyahu isn't going to get this letter and say, well, everybody go back, or Hamas gets this letter and says Humboldt has spoken. But if any which way that somebody makes somebody out there feel more comfortable that they've done their part, I'll be fine. So, and I don't know if my grandkids are ever going to ask me what I did. But, all right.
Call for the opening.
All right. So we'll start with you, since I know your vote.
Sure.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bushnell is abstaining. Thank you. Motion carries for zero and one.
We have 11 and a one, so we'll go to the public hearing. Right now, excuse me.
Public comment.
Public comment on non-agenda items. I'm sorry if you're right.
Ken Swawski, I wanted to do a shout out to the County Council's office because last planning commission meeting, they had one of the most comprehensive and wonderful reviews of the Brown Act. And that's greatly appreciated. Highly recommend that everybody watch that, that particular video there. I haven't seen one better. And then last night, I went to the City of Blue Lake and attended their planning commission meeting. I'm attending all their meetings out there. And, and I recommend they look at it also. We had an instance where there was a project there of a subdivision. And two of the, there are only four commissioners there. Two of them said they had potential conflicts. One was a conflict that they were within the distance of a sliver of the project. The other one was contiguous to the project. And I believe that will have to be reheard because those both people, neither of those people left the dais. They both participated to a degree in the discussion. One actually didn't vote. And then at the recommendation of our city planner, he said that the, the one person who was the least egregious, the one person who was not contiguous but only had a sliver would be allowed to vote because they needed a quorum. In my opinion, that's not, that's not how that works. You have, either you have a conflict or you don't, and we'll find out about that. A few other things going on in Blue Lake. We have a apparent problem with our billing on our water and sewer. Our city staff member, our city clerk, bills two-thirds of her time to water and sewer. I did a public records request for Real Del. Their city clerk down there does, I think, 25% at the most. Our city manager bills three-fourths of her wages to the sewer and water. And that's passed on to the ratepayers. And that's not accurate as far as time that's spent. So I really appreciate you folks making sure that your funds are proportioned correctly. In my opinion, this will end up in probably a major refund to the ratepayers in the City of Blue Lake regarding their sewer and water. There's a 218 process. And I appreciate Mike Wilson taking notes on everything. Anyway, there's 218 process, I think it is, where you determine the rates. And when somebody doesn't accurately portray their costs, but pass these labor costs and the cost, payroll costs on to the, to the ratepayers... payroll costs on to the ratepayers, it's inappropriate. We will see where that goes. There's a few other things out in Blue Lake which we discuss at another time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this thing, and maybe let's learn and make sure we learn from other people's mistakes rather than knowing. And a great shout-out. Fantastic presentation, which you all should watch. Thanks for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else, and I apologize, I got this a little bit late, but I didn't read this. We did have a proclamation for National Foster Care Month, whereas May is... I think, is there... Are there people here, or is... They want to come up? Oh, there you are. You're behind the podium. Sorry. I didn't mean to... I didn't mean to kick you in the curb. I'll read this, and then you guys can speak, okay? "It's a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, County of Humboldt. Whereas May is National Foster Care Month, and in Humboldt County, we celebrate Caregiver Appreciation Month, which includes resource parents, tribally-approved caregivers, relatives, non-related extended family members and caregivers working with youth living in short-term residential therapeutic programs. Whereas these caregivers welcome into their homes children and youth ranging from newborns to non-minor dependents up to 21 years of age. Whereas there are 255 county children and youth in out-of-home care being provided with safe, secure, stable, nurturing homes with compassionate families. And whereas these caregivers practice a high standard of skilled parenting by being willing to seek out resources and training to help children cope with trauma, loss, separation through developmental life stages while ensuring educational services, as well as medical and dental care are provided. Whereas these caregivers are valued members of the child and family team dedicated to supporting, mentoring, and advocating for children and their families, and are vital to ensuring that children remain in their communities. And whereas these caregivers are open to maintaining lifelong connections to children, youth, families, and are essential to supporting reunification, permanency by keeping children connected. Whereas these caregivers meet a special need in our community by ensuring children and youth receive the attention they need, the respect they deserve, and unconditional love. Whereas Humboldt County caregivers deserve our gratitude and respect for the work they do every day. Now therefore, it be resolved that the county Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim May 2024 as Caregiver Appreciation Month, and thank resource parents, tribally-approved caregivers, relatives, non-related extended family members, and caregivers working with youth living in short-term residential therapeutic programs for their dedication of the children and youth of Humboldt County."
I'll give a... Is it... Can I give a quick word? Okay. Hi, I'm Ivy Breen. I'm a deputy director for Child Welfare Services, and like the proclamation said, if there's ever a group to celebrate and respect and admire every day, every month, is our substitute care providers, our foster parents, our community members that care for kids when they need them the most. These care providers navigate complicated systems. They advocate for these kids. They open their homes, their hearts, and they provide lifelong connections. And on behalf of Child Welfare, we are so grateful and so appreciative of all of our foster parents, our tribal members, our community members that step up and care for these kids, like Renee over here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. On behalf of the caregivers. That's about all I can do.
Just got to get back to work.
Chair Bone, just a point of order since we are taking this...
If there was anybody else that wanted to speak on that item, they are more than welcome to speak on that item. Seeing no one, thanks.
Now, Marshall Ranch?
Chair Bone, can we take a five-minute break, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, there is Supervisor Ranch. I will open the... I'll have the ordinance introduced.
Ashley?
No?
It doesn't require introduction.
What's that?
It's been adequately described.
All right, okay. And then there is a... Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, and I apologize. I'm related to the folks that own the Marshall Ranch, and I have no financial benefit or gain from them and have not... I'm not on title on any properties. I just want to disclose that.
Okay. With that, the floor is yours, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Good morning. Good morning, supervisors. John Ford and Rodney Yandel to present the Marshall Ranch application. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Yandel to give a brief overview of the application and what it will accomplish.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen to get started.
Great.
I am screen sharing via Zoom. Okay, here we go. There it is. Okay. Good morning, board. My name is Rodney Yandel. I'll present... I'll be presenting this Marshall Ranch Class B Ag Preserve Zone Reclassification Notice of Merger and Land Conservation Contract that's located in the Breisland area, just south of Breisland. The Marshall Ranch LLC has applied to obtain a Class B Ag Preserve under the Williamson Act. In order to do that, all the lands within the Marshall Ranch holdings that they propose to be a preserve would need to be zone-reclassed from non-TPZ to AEB5160. So you can see here that the areas that are kind of a teal-green are currently AE. They will be rezoned to AEB5160, and the areas that are gray are unclassified, and they will be zoned to that class as well. In addition, the area of the preserve would have to be a minimum of 600 acres. This area is over 2,800 acres. And lastly, any parcel less than 160 acres in size would need to be merged or lot line adjusted with another parcel to obtain that size. In this case, they propose to merge all the parcels within the boundaries of their holding into one separate legal parcel. This, after... If approved, this is what the Marshall Ranch LLC Class B Preserve boundaries would look like. Staff's recommending that the board make all the required findings for the approval of the project and adopt a resolution that finds the proposed project exempt from environmental review and approve the Marshall Ranch LLC Ag Preserve Zone Reclassification and Notice of Merger and Land Conservation Contract. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll take public comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Could you just describe AEB5160, please?
Okay. AE is obviously agriculture-exclusive, like B5. B5 is a special combining zone that kind of regulates what could be done on a certain lot area. The 160 is the minimum parcel size.
Can you describe B5 for me? What's the list of uses and not?
I believe B5 has more to do with no further subdivision than it does use regulations.
Great. I mean, and then one last question. Do we... Is there a particular tax change that we should be aware of? I mean, we're in budget time, so I just want to have disclosure of that.
So, there is a tax reduction for a Williamson Act contract. So rather than it being taxed at the standard rate, in this particular case, in full disclosure, that would only apply to the properties that are outside of TPZ because the TPZ already have a tax benefit. And then, so it's the areas that are currently AE that are within the Williamson Act contract that would receive that benefit.
Okay, and thank you. From my perspective, this is a step in the right direction from a land use perspective. I think this is a way to aggregate properties so that you actually... So people can actually manage them to both make a living but also manage... I'll just use the term very broadly, biomass, in terms of timber and grasslands and all those things that are across the landscape. And you need more than 40 acres to make a living in these landscapes to do that, and I think that this is definitely... I mean, for most people. And so there are those that can do it, but this is when we're managing for fire, when we're managing for other resource-based attributes on our landscape, these larger holdings are a way to more efficiently get to that place. So from my perspective, I think this is a good move, and I think it's... I'm happy to support it.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Could either one of you address the requirements with the Williamson Act around are there cattle that have to be on the land or anything like that for agricultural use?
Yeah, the agricultural use requires under the contract that there be a certain value of agricultural production coming off the land every year, and I believe it's $12,000. What's that?
It's around $15,000.
Is it 15? Or 15 cows?
Isn't it 2,500? It's pretty...
For the amount, yeah.
Yeah.
It's around 15 cows.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I know we are considering this proposal separate from any other projects, but I do just want to express my appreciation for the conservation actions for the Marshall Ranch as a whole, and I thought I'm ready to vote if y'all are. I'll move approval.
Second. Supervisor Joe?
Yeah, I applaud the owners of the Marshall Ranch for this effort, as well as the very, very large water storage project that they have been cooperating with on their property. It's a pretty major project and is designed to create enhancements to the low flow on Redwood Creek during the summertime to protect endangered species such as coho. So I applaud the family and the owners for that effort, as well as this.
And I think we have a history of this county of supporting the Williamson Act. Even though we've... The governor keeps it in the budget to the tune of $1,000 a year. We don't get replenished, but it is exactly what you would consider wonderful stuff. So it does keep it in whole, one family, and it limits the uses. And again, the 160s will go out. We don't have the parcels now, so... Anyway, is it moved to second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right. Got it, Nick?
I got it. Thank you.
Got it, girl.
And now we have an appeal. The Planning Commission's condition of approval for a parcel map subdivision and special permits.
Correct. Thank you, Chair Bone. John Ford and Rodney Yandel again to present the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a parcel map subdivision and special permits. I'm going to ask Mr. Yandel to give the presentation overview on that, but I did want to mention just two things. This often gets confusing, is that the appellant is really appealing a condition which was to require that the county code be upheld and curb veteran sidewalk be installed. The Planning Commission approved that with a seven-zero vote. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Yandel to explain the project. Oh, sorry. That's the other thing I wanted to say. It is an appeal of a condition, but since it is de novo, the whole of the action is within the board's discretion.
It's all open game.
Rodney?
Share my screen once again. Seems as if I may have lost Zoom in translation here.
I hate that. Going to make it, Eric?
I have it open right now. Is there any way to scoop that thing up? Sorry. Wifi is kind of spotty. All right. I'll begin my presentation. Oh, my God. This isn't fair, man. New share. New share. Sorry about the technical difficulties. Apparently I'm still having some with this microphone situation here. Okay. Want me to continue? Okay, I'll be presenting the appeal of a Sutter parcel map subdivision and special permits approval. It's in the McKinleyville area.
Problem with, uh, sound here. And we can't, everything's muted in Rodney's computer, but it's still coming through. On Zoom?
On your Zoom, yeah. If, on the carrot, if you click on the carrot and it's me, I'll hear.
I love technology. Click on the carrot.
Is this better? Gosh, that's so much better. Okay.
Good job on the carrot call.
Okay. I skipped a slide. Okay, this is, uh, the area where the subdivision was approved at planning commission. It's in the southeastern portion of McKinleyville. This is a boundary around a parcel that was subdivided and all the neighboring properties, as you can see there. This is the tentative parcel map that was approved for the project, showing the five resultant parcels. Little background, the planning commission approved the following project at the beginning of, uh, last month. It was a minor subdivision resulting in four parcels and a remnant, a remainder parcel to host existing proposed residential development. Also included is a special permit to allow existing structures to remain on proposed parcel one prior to the development of a main building and a special permit to allow for lot size modification. Also included in the approval was an exception from road width requirements. At the hearing, the applicant requested an exception to the requirement for a sidewalk along Azalea Avenue North within the subdivision. However, the planning commission was unable to make findings in support of granting this exception. Basis of appeal. Yeah, went too far. This, actually, I want to stop here. This is the slide I put together for the planning commission. That yellow line is what the sidewalk requirement was going to that PC hearing.
Could you go back to that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I could. Yeah, because I'm really, is there, okay, the yellow line, does it stop down at the bottom or does it go farther now?
It stops at Sutter Road.
Okay, and then?
And goes up past the second driveway on the left.
Supervisor Bush, no?
Um, thank you. Is there, on that sidewalk, is there any connecting sidewalks that would connect to it? Or is it just a sidewalk that doesn't connect?
On Sutter Road, there are connecting sidewalks.
So down at the bottom?
Yes, ma'am.
And then it, and then it goes to the end of, the middle of that road there with no connection?
That's correct. That's what was approved at the planning commission.
Why? Why would you have a sidewalk that goes, I mean, what would be the purpose, I guess?
The purpose is, in a situation that's similar to a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Where you've got people on a cul-de-sac. And keep in mind, this is, uh, basically what's called an urban road. And so it serves urban development. Normally, there would be curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides of the street. In this particular case, the public works did offer an alternative that the planning commission did approve, which was to approve or require curb gutter and sidewalk only on one side of the street. And the reason for that is so that people that are going in and out of this development as pedestrians would have a place to walk. I think it is really important that we, if I could ask, um, for Mr. Yandel to be able to finish the presentation, because there is more here to consider.
Can I ask one other question? Is that a private road?
It will not be a public road. It provides public access, so it won't ever be gated off, but it won't be publicly maintained.
Okay, thanks.
It won't be in our system.
Correct. Could I add to that, though?
Yes.
That's consistent with most all of the roads.
No, but, yeah, no, that's why I said it. Yeah, I agree. All right, moving on to the basis of appeal. Um, the appellant submitted an appeal of the sidewalk requirement on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and would like this requirement removed. There are three main issues staff has identified as the basis of the appeal, and they're described and addressed in the next three slides. I don't understand, John. I just don't get it. This won't work. Okay. Issue one, the appellant is arguing that the requirement for a sidewalk on a private road easement is not a reasonable improvement for the parcels being created. However, subdivision, the subdivision map act, map act section six, six, four, one, one dot one states that whenever a local ordinance requires improvements for a division of land, which is not a subdivision of five or more lots, the regulation shall be limited to the dedication of right-of-way easements and the construction of reasonable off-site and onsite improvements for the parcels being created. Furthermore, the subdivision map act section does not preclude requirements for construction of onsite curb gutter and sidewalks on private roads in urban areas as these are reasonable improvements needed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Issue two identified is the appellant is asserting that the sidewalk requirement lacks justification or nexus to the county road categories. After reviewing the unique circumstances of the subdivision, the county found that a modified CAT six road for the northerly extension of Azalea Avenue was appropriate for this urban subdivision. A category road six is described as a two-lane traveled way with sidewalks and on-street parking. Issue three, the appellant is asserting that the sidewalk requirement lacks justification or nexus to the McKinleyville Community Plan, specifically the circulation element. However, McKinleyville Community Plan, section four, two, three, zero, seven, states all new roads and intersections shall be designed to provide convenient use by pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicles. Section four, two, three, oh, ten, states that in subdivisions creating new interior roads, bikeways, off-street pedestrian ways, or sidewalks separate from the roadways shall be incorporated when warranted in the design of the subdivision. And lastly, section four, two, six, two, one, states that all subdivision applications which propose new roads not listed in the circulation element shall submit alternate roadway designs which reflect an emphasis on pedestrian convenience. It has been determined that Azalea Avenue North is within a non-exclusive right-of-way easement that serves approximately sixty-eight parcels north of the project area. As such, the conditions of approval have been modified to include the following. Number one, dedicate irrevocable right-of-way across Azalea Avenue North to the county of Humboldt. And number two, construct a curb gutter and sidewalk as shown on the slide below. This, you see, the, uh, the sidewalk would be this gray area along the right side of the roadway there that looks kind of like a dark gray or black. That would extend the sidewalk from the southern parcel boundary to the northern parcel boundary within the non-exclusive easement. The dashed line represents a future sidewalk or trail that could be approved by others. Wait. Which the easement goes all the way from Sutter Road North to Blackbird Avenue. This is being, if you were standing on Blackbird Avenue looking down towards the subdivision, you would see the area that could be improved. It's an off-site improvement from the subject parcel that could be improved within the easement by others at a later date. Staff's recommending that the board deny the appeal, approving the project subject to the revised conditions of approval. If the board has any questions, staff from planning and public works is available to respond.
I think John answered, but could you go back to once, two slides? Future southern, no, the other way. You got it, Derek. Looking southerly from Blackbird Avenue at the future sidewalk trail location to be constructed by others. So, uh, is, is so basically you'd get, people are going now, do they have the right-of-way now just to walk up and down?
I got it. Yes, they do.
So right there, is that somebody's backyard? They walk through now or?
It's actually an easement that exists right now for the benefit of the people who have purchased lots in that subdivision. So I think one of the things that I wanted to clarify is that that could, we could, the board could choose to condition to make that improvement now. We chose not to recommend that at this time because the planning commission didn't require anything other than onsite improvements.
Yeah.
So we didn't change that to recommend an off-site improvement. That would be an off-site improvement. But that is an obligation that exists on the property with that easement right there to allow access across that.
So the easement, the easement is not there just for the benefit? It, it was there all along for the, for the houses that were? Is it an active easement? Did they use it?
Not sure that they probably recognize that it exists. I, I, I don't know. I can't, we can't answer that question.
I'm just, I'm just thinking if I lived along it, I don't know if I want. Anyway, okay. Do you want, do you want to hear from the appellate?
I can ask one question.
Sure.
Um, Director Ford or Rodney, how many, uh, easements do you know off the top of your head? Like how many homes are there on that avenue or that little?
Uh, north of the, of the project site?
That would use that access?
Possibly up, up to around sixty-eight parcels.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Have the benefit of using that non-exclusive easement.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Supervisor, Joe?
Yeah, this is probably a good point to offer some ex parte, um, acknowledgement. Uh, I have had communication with a couple of the representatives of the developer, Mr. Sutter, and had discussions with him about this project. Um, if you go back to that slide again, please. The reason there's that big broad area, uh, there in terms of the easement is because there is a culvert. There's a very important underground drainage that comes down off of Blackbird and all that area there that drains into a culvert structure that comes down through that easement and heads down towards Sutter Road. So just to share a little knowledge about why there's that really wide easement right there. It's not just the red part, but there's also a drainage easement through there. And in those ex parte communications I had, it seemed to me that while I very much support sidewalks in the larger sense of things, uh, where they connect, and this one certainly does connect down at Sutter Road. This is a project where the sidewalk development is a substantial expense on a pretty small development. And if you're putting in sidewalks like for the Blackbird Avenue and the rest of it, where, as you said, there's fifty-eight or so parcels, then that cost gets spread out over a very large area. In this case, it's a, a large expense over a small area. And I noted in MCCP forty-two thirty, it states, uh, a couple of things. One was sidewalks or off-street pedestrian ways. So there is an option there, and I suggested to the developer that it might be okay, depending on what this board feels about it, that it, this, rather than the very, very expensive curb gutter and sidewalk, still an important thing would be a pedestrian, uh, access way next to the road. Bicyclists can come down the road. It's not going to have a large volume of traffic. It's a dead end like a cul-de-sac. And so a pedestrian pathway using decomposed granite, for instance, for a dedicated pathway in the area where the sidewalk would go, would serve the purpose and meet MCCP forty-two thirty in terms of off-street pedestrian ways. And, uh, it would also connect up to that upper area where the, uh, pedestrian pathway using decomposed granite could be created to make that connection. So I just wanted to mention that I've had those communications. It was a suggestion, as I said, to the representatives. I can't tell you whether I'll support this project or not. Uh, that would show some sort of a bias. But I did have discussions about potential alternatives that I thought might work. But again, I'm here to listen and learn and see what the rest of my fellow board members think about the project. So just wanted to share that communication in depth. Thank you.
Donna, just get that opened up. Back to the, the culvert is, is this, so we, I mean, a lot of us have.
I just have a point of clarification on the process here. Are we having a discussion now? Are we waiting for the, what's the order of what we're supposed to?
In detail.
All right, you want to do an ex parte, too?
Sure. I, I spoke with Mr. Madsen, who's a representative for Mr. Sutter, uh, the appellant, briefly on the phone yesterday, um, and just heard some of, um, his perspective on the matter. Um, and that's the only ex parte disclosure I need to make.
Okay, and then we'll go to the supervisor.
I also spoke with, uh, Mr. Madsen briefly.
Yeah, no one talked to me. Let's hear from the appellant. Applicant, appellant.
First off, thank you very much, um, supervisors. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. Thank you, Director Ford and Planner Yandel for your time and presentation. First and foremost, I just want to take a quick step back. We're talking about a private road within a, a, you know, we're going to, one of the conditions of approval that are not being appealed is the need to establish a road maintenance association. This road network and all the interior access is going to be retained as private and treated as private moving forward, as well as maintained by the residents there. So, um, I think an appropriate decision could be made by the road maintenance association as to what they would want and what would meet their needs at a, at a road maintenance meeting that has to happen. It's a condition. We're not appealing that. It's also, in my opinion, great to note that the, uh, encroachment at Sutter Road is going to be upgraded to, uh, meet ADA standards. You know, we have a high-value improvement at the Sutter Road intersection there. And, um, I think that including those high-value community asset improvements in the conditions of approval was a great move, and we support that. We're not appealing that. That, uh, zone has a dedication to the public, and that is being extended. No appeal. Just happy to do it for the community. That's great. I want to take a step back to six, six, four, one, one dot one. That is the state determining, like, we have all determined that these infill development projects are important for our community. I think it's interesting that we're on the tail end of the Marshall merger, and what we're seeing is kind of a, a two-pronged approach here to land management where in the wild, you know, the open wild lands, we have this project that just went through that's going to, you know, protect wild open spaces. That's great. And here we are at a, kind of the rural urban interface, having a minor subdivision, a, kind of the rural urban interface, having a minor subdivision, small-scale project. On, you know, in 664-11 dot one, there was a, an agreement, if you will, a compromise, that we're gonna give up some of these conditions that we would normally want that would, you know, nobody here is saying, we don't want sidewalks. Everybody loves sidewalks. When the conditions warrant them, we want a sidewalk. When I walk out of this meeting and I step onto Fifth Street, I don't want to walk straight into traffic. In the Sutter Minor Subdivision, we are talking about the creation of four parcels. So, under 664-11 dot one, we need to address the need of just those four parcels. That is the container in which this decision is made. What is the need for those four parcels? And in the Planning Commission hearing, if, if you had a chance to watch it, I know it is fairly long. They deliberated for quite a while on this issue. Multiple commissioners on multiple occasions said, we don't see the need for this particular improvement, but we like sidewalks. We all like sidewalks. And so, they add, they maintain the condition regardless of the fact that the need couldn't be established. And that need is what drives this decision under 664-11 dot one. So, I just want us to remember that. It's not the need of the 68 other parcels that is to be considered here. It's the need generated by this project. And we've already decided that these infill projects are valuable to our community. They are the way we want to meet our housing need. We have a housing need. We want to meet that. So, with that, I think the, the salient component we come back to is this balancing of the equities. Are we going to demand a sidewalk that doesn't proportionally respond to this need of the four parcels, right? So, we have these four parcels where, is there a need to keep them off of the North Azalea Road? And I think that's, reasonable minds can differ on that. But when we're talking about a sum total of six parcels, that will, that's the only use that this subdivision will ever see. Six parcels, six parcels' worth of traffic in an interior access with private roads used by private easement, no public dedication. That need is, in, in my assessment, that need is very low. You can, you know, reasonable minds can differ. I could understand a different perspective. But to meet the needs of those four parcels, we have a low need. The conditions of the site in particular are a hill slope. It's naturally vegetated. It, it's not eroding. There, you know, as it stands, that hill slope is in good condition. Plugging that sidewalk into it is going to be difficult, not impossible. Nobody's saying it's impossible. But it would be extra difficult, and it would cause more impacts than would otherwise be accepted, expected for your standard porous sidewalk on the flat ground, right? So, we're gonna have to excavate farther in to meet our slope requirements. There's gonna be some erosion concerns. There's gonna be more impacts. So, we have a high-impact, high-cost sidewalk to meet a low-necessity need. And, and in my, my opinion, just an opinion, that is a cost-benefit analysis that turns towards, let's have this good project, right? We want good infill development projects, and we want to support our community's housing need. And so, that's, and if, and we have to take into consideration, which was the point, one of the points of 664-11 dot one, is we're gonna forego some of these otherwise desirable traits so that we can have these small-scale projects that don't have the budget to support these otherwise, you know, if we're talking about a 50-house subdivision, yes, absolutely. The traffic and the walkway, they need to be separate. But if we're talking about four new parcels in an area with two parcels, so a total of six parcels, anticipated use on this roadway, we just don't have the, the articulated need in the record. In fact, the Planning Commissioners all said that the need wasn't there. They didn't see it. But the love of sidewalks prevailed. That was kind of the thing. I included in my comment a statement about ADA requirements, and I, I want to say that I am an inclusive person. I would like to see all of our community's needs met, alterable, everyone. But I wanted to include that, not because I want to exclude anybody's needs, but because I want to encourage the Board of Supervisors to understand you have some discretion here. We're talking about a interior private situation. So, the crushed granite idea has some legs. And I would add that Mr. Sutter has been open to that, right? This is a suggestion, which I think is brilliant, that has, I'm just gonna, rough estimate, 90% of the benefit at 10% of the cost. That seems like a really good compromise to me. And I hope you agree.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I will now open it up to public comment.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Lyndia Mello, and I am the homeowner that you just showed the picture up, came up on the screen. I would like to know when that picture was taken, because we've had an RV sitting there for two and a half years. So, I don't know when the county was looking at it at that time, but coming to this meeting has addressed more concerns. I also submitted a response to you with our concerns on May 16th, so I wouldn't have to stand up here for three minutes. And so, seeing, seeing this come across to us now is kind of a shock. You know, that little red mark that you want to put a sidewalk on our property, that is private property. And Sutter Ranch was not even there when we moved into that house. And we watched it come alive, and we watched things happen on our property that we weren't well-happy with. And ever since we put that RV there, it has stopped. I would like to see a road sign at the end, which I haven't noticed since I've been there since 2000, to stop people from coming on our property. We've actually had quads, drug trafficking coming through our property at times. We actually had a truck come through there one night. I don't even know how that truck got through those bushes, but that truck had to be scraped up really bad. And it almost rolled. I, I heard it coming because I'm used to the quads coming in during hours at the time. I heard the truck coming, and it was loud, and I jumped up, and I actually thought the truck was gonna roll into our bedroom, because the property is kind of at a slant. And so, I'm getting worked up, so I'm gonna stop. But it's just like, I, those are our concerns. And to have a sidewalk come through there is just inviting more people and more issues to come into our neighborhood. Sutter Ranch is a nice neighborhood. Behind where we're at, it is a little bit more rural. You know, we have people walk through there periodically. We don't like it because it's our backyard. You know, I understand they're cutting through there for a shortcut when they're walking. You know, it irritates me. You know, you wouldn't like it either if it was your backyard. So, those are my concerns.
Did you wake up your husband when you jumped out of bed when you thought the truck was coming?
Kansas Lawski, being a developer and having done subdivisions out in the McKinleyville area, one thing that I never minded doing was putting in curb gutter and sidewalk. I would follow the recommendation of your Director of Public Works regarding its necessity there. If you do, if you do come up with some other thing, crush granite or something like that, you're still gonna have to have the same amount of cut on your banks. That's not gonna have an effect. Also, one of the biggest things in our world these days is ADA compliance. When I was selling off lots, I found that it was a very good investment for me to have curb gutter and sidewalk there for that particular purpose. It's, it's a, it's a marketing thing. It's a safety item. It's, this is, this is not something that, in my opinion, should be discounted easily. It's just, that's how you protect, protect your children, to have them have a safe sidewalk to walk on. I know the property owners wouldn't have been happy, but if, if this was my subdivision, I would have probably proposed to actually put some form of connectivity into the area. People do it anyway. You might as well have it be safe. This is a trend in McKinleyville. Very few of the roads are dedicated these days. The county doesn't accept them, and we should bring these up to self. Where, they're safe for the public, and that was my main concern. You know, I'd hate to have some child be hit because it wasn't defined where they were supposed to walk. You teach your children to walk on the sidewalks, not on the streets. And I strongly support denial of this particular one. We have some litigators in the room. I would say that most likely if they were, they have every right to appeal. I strongly support the right to appeal. Should they attempt to sue on this, I think the county would be wise to demur it. Fortunately, the county cannot countersue on these items, or they do not tend to. Otherwise, this would be a, a case for a frivolous lawsuit, in my opinion, and would end up with a malicious prosecution case going forward. I don't know how you're aware of that. But that means the lawyers pay for filing something that has, is boundless. I would add the condition, if I were sitting up there in your position, to go ahead and have some kind of connectivity put in where the red thing is. I think that should have been put in at that time. I think that's in the public's best interest. Thank you for my opportunity to testify today.
Sitting there thinking, I don't know.
You only get one bite of the apple. I'm sorry. You only get one bite of the apple. He can come up.
Yeah. Could you bring up that picture of the, of the Sutter Ranch with the green, with the red line going through where the sidewalk is supposed to go?
Just give me one second. I, I stopped the slideshow, so just bear with me, okay? Okay. I got this. I got this. We're gonna go like this. Okay. That's a lot of sharing, huh?
Okay.
There it is.
What our concerns are, is this is my house right here, off to the right. My property line goes clear to that brick. And then you want to put a sidewalk, I guess, on my properties when I'm concerned, when it doesn't need to be down that far. If you're putting the housing to the south of this, I'm concerned about just taking over my property like that. This is what I'm really concerned about. And I don't see a need for a sidewalk there. And I use that property. And that's basically what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And John, I was gonna ask the question, where the red line is, there's an easement?
Yes, there is.
Is it a utility easement, or is it a, or is it, because as I was gonna say earlier, a lot of us have gas lines going underneath our, but we, we see it all the time when PG, but does that give an easement to walk?
It is a specific easement for pedestrian access.
Okay. That's what I wanted. Thanks.
It's an easement for pedestrians?
Yes.
I don't know that, so I'd have to find out.
Okay.
Could we go back to the slide that had the whole Sutter Ranch subdivision on it with the sidewalk system?
Yeah. Let me see how responsive this keyboard is.
I think there were a couple of slides before this one.
Yeah.
Anyway, my name's Robert Sutter. I'm the applicant. And so, I've lived in that area my entire life. And my dad did the Sutter Ranch subdivision maybe 20, 25 years ago. And as part of that subdivision, there was a sidewalk system installed, I think, which really creates circulation for that area. So, I know there may not be, if, we went to the one that shows the entire, the Sutter Ranch subdivision with the, with the sidewalks. Maybe one more. Okay, that, that's probably gonna be the best one we have. So, anyway, you know, as far as connectivity, yes, it would be a direct route from Sutter Road to Blackbird if we were to do a sidewalk through there. However, there is, like you can see there, a complete sidewalk system with the Sutter Ranch subdivision. And like I say, my dad did that a few years ago and installed thousands of feet of sidewalk, not only there, but also down Sutter Road as part of his requirement for the subdivision. And, and I know that we need, we're not supposed to take into consideration the cost of the improvements. But with the initial proposed subdivision sidewalk, which just went to the back of the first lot, I had three estimates from local contractors to do that, and they ranged from $90,000 to $100,000. This proposal extends it probably another 100, 150 feet. So, we're probably closer to 200, 250,000 for a sidewalk. I would have to sell all of the lots that are created to pay for these improvements. So, you know, if it comes down to those types of improvements being needed, the subdivision's not gonna go. So, we end up with no sidewalk, no lots. It's just not feasible to do it, creating a sidewalk that goes nowhere, a sidewalk that serves a public that already has a sidewalk system, and being on private property, and like I say, there's, there's only gonna be possibly six lots that would utilize this roadway. So, anyway, I appreciate your consideration, and thank you so much.
Good morning. My name's Mike O'Hern. I'm a surveyor here in Eureka. I'm the surveyor for this project. I'm not the agent, so I don't know a lot of the ins and outs of the processing, and I didn't attend the Planning Commission meeting. But I'm here more as a resident of McKinleyville and just an experienced surveyor in this area. I'd like you to consider a couple of things. That asking for a sidewalk deferral or removing the requirement for a sidewalk on a parcel map is not an unusual request. I can think of many two, three, and four-lot subdivisions where a sidewalk was not required. On a larger, a couple larger projects, just for examples, I would say the Bella Vista subdivision at the top of the hill in McKinleyville. There are many, many lots on a road that have no, has no sidewalk. They're larger lots, but still, there is no sidewalk in that area, and I don't think there are any problems in that area. And then for a more dense subdivision, the Central Estates subdivision off of Hartwood on Arbor Way, there are some very densely-packed houses with no sidewalk at all. So, I think you could keep, right, request that you keep an open mind and think about some of the other areas where sidewalks haven't been required. And in view of the exorbitant costs in this particular area, it just seems like the benefit and the cost just don't weigh out properly. So, I'd like you to consider alternate designs. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the board.
Sure. That'd be great. All right. Let's start with a couple of questions. John, with SB nine and other Senate Bill nine and other bills that we see coming across, the, what's the densification potential for not just these lots, but within this neighborhood? Like, what are the entitlements that we now see that are different? And I'm, I'm asking this question because we have an existing condition, and we have a potential, you know, 20-year, 30-year projection that one could make in terms of that. And so, can we talk about that for a second? What, what are we seeing in terms of the potentials for accessory dwelling units, and then also for lot splits in those entitlements in these single-family zones?
So, that is one of the things that has changed in terms of planning with, particularly within urbanized areas that are designated to be subject and available to the benefits of SB nine and accessory dwelling units. So, when we look at a subdivision like that, even though they're creating five lots, there's really the potential, without much effort involved, to have 10 units at this location. SB nine, this would be an area that SB nine, this would be an area that the lots could be subdivided into smaller lots, that could basically be subdivided in half.
I don't just mean just for this development, but for everything around it.
That is correct.
So that's the context by which we do planning, is not just for, and I would say, I have a difference with the attorney for the applicant on this, in that these developments do have connectivity in terms of safety, not just for the people who live within the development, but then also, it was already pre-planned, in terms of access, for a much larger space. Excuse me. And so, what, what do we see in terms of the population of the development that serve now by these entitlements? More or less?
So, yeah, there's, there's 68 units there, and if we were to look at the, the development pattern that exists out there, we're not, because of where the houses are and the lots, the size of the houses, we're not likely to see these lots further split. Not, not in the high percentage-wise, anyway. Maybe there's a few that would be available for that. There is the potential for accessory dwelling units for some of them.
Right, and we've, height limits have also been changed in terms of, so the potential to go up on some of these units is there. And also, we've minimized setbacks as well, right?
For ADUs.
Yep, yeah, for second units. So there is, there's, there is that potential. So, okay, I, so, from a planning perspective, also, there is this, this argument that this only serves four or five, but when I look around, I mean, the consum, you know, the comparable length of sidewalk for four or five units is not different. Sometimes it's actually much longer in, in this neighborhood, right? So we, you might have, you might have six lots in a row, and they will have, you know, serviced by a much longer sidewalk. So, in comparison, do you see what I'm saying?
I, I do see what you're saying, and if I could, I'm gonna provide a little bit more information and context than just answering that direct question. But the recommendation to the planning commission was already to modify the required improvements. Normally, on an urban road, there would be curb gutter sidewalk on both sides of the street. That's not the requirement here.
Yeah, I hear you.
And, and Mr. O'Hern, in his testimony, is absolutely correct, that it has not been uncommon to allow for the planning commission to approve subdivisions not requiring sidewalks. This was actually an interesting action by the planning commission, because I, it's funny what we can focus on in terms of what the planning commission said. And one of the things that I focused on, I didn't hear as much about, there's not a need here, but I heard the concern with safety, is that people walking up and down a road, not having a place to walk on the street. And, and so that becomes part of the factors that the board needs to weigh, is, is that what is needed in this particular location to ensure public health, safety, and welfare, safe walking space for students to get down to Sutter, to be able to walk to, to school, and, and not be walking in the vehicular travelway.
And speaking to that, and the pedestrian access easement that was created for planning purposes years ago, for the, and I can look at the, the area and see, like, okay, so there's this very kind of L-shaped block, it's quite large, to get around, if you were a pedestrian, it's kind of a long walk all the way around one way or the other. So, in sort of the context of planning, safe neighborhoods, you know, walkability is extremely important, and making, and making sure that those connectivities are, are, so, so, while this is, this is de novo, I mean, we could make the determination today that, that safety of the, of the, you know, improving safety in the neighborhood would include that pedestrian, would include improvement and actually development of that pedestrian walkway. And that pedestrian walkway could be paved, it could be, there could be a fence put along it in order to protect the, the neighboring property's interests, and you could even put bollards to make sure that people can't drive through there. And that would be, I mean, we could make findings to, that's basically an improvement that would increase pedestrian safety, not just of the, of the folks that live in this new development, but also the neighborhood at large. So, and I would say that, that, I don't, and when we're thinking about sort of the future, this is, this, these are the moments when we make these decisions about the direction of development for neighborhoods and where they go, because frankly, I'm not sure when, when these types of improvements would happen in the future, and it was designed for in the past. So there was an intent and an intention through that easement, that this would be connective, that this connectivity would occur. And it seems like this is the moment when that happens, because you have a development that's, that has a direct nexus, both geographically and, you know, and people-wise, in terms of, in terms of population. So, from my perspective, I think that there is an absolute need for that pedestrian connectivity all the way through this, this, this block, as it were, for the health and benefit and safety of not just the, but including the folks that would be living in this place, whether there's six units or 12 units in the future, because that's the entitlement that actually comes with this subdivision, minimally. I mean, unless people want to do more lot splits, and we've seen, we're starting to see some creative lot splits around the state, and we've even seen it in the last thing that came to us from the McKinleville, from that subdivision, where you had four units on these lot splits in order to, to get that density. And you're right about the current development of these houses that exist in this neighborhood, but this neighborhood's somehow, I mean, how old is this development?
It's, it's not that old. It's been developing over the last 25 years.
Right, and I'd just say, as property values increase, it does happen that people buy into these neighborhoods and completely redevelop them. It happens. And so, from my perspective, I feel like, from a future perspective, I would like to see a resolution that includes not just, basically, access from all the way through. So that's kind of where I stand on this currently, and I'm happy to hear what others have to say about that and how we get there. This is what happens sometimes when things are brought to the board, so.
Mr. Professor Bushnell, then Arroyo.
Thank you. So, listening to the applicant that states, you know, if this is a requirement, he's not gonna be able to feasibly, financially do this, what would be the downfall to having a dedicated walking area that's not a pavement, but is a dedicated area, as such as Supervisor Madron stated?
I think that's a policy decision for the board to make, and requiring some kind of a, as I recall the language, that was a separated pedestrian pathway, so it would be something that wasn't part of the road improvement. And, and that could certainly be added as a requirement to have that.
Currently, if the project doesn't go forward, people are still gonna be walking down the center of the road, and, correct? There's no sidewalk there, currently, or, or dedicated pathway.
Well, there's only, there's two houses right now.
With 68 easements, you said, right?
With, with an easement for the benefit of 68 other homes, yeah. But I, I wonder how many people really know that that's a pedestrian access way right now.
Everybody knows. So I'm just curious, you know, if it's not financially feasible for the owner to put in a sidewalk, to me, it seems like it would be better, safety-wise, if, and I don't know if he's a minimal, to doing a walking path that isn't of a sidewalk nature, concrete nature, I guess, but to doing some kind of dedicated path, so that he can move forward with that project. And through the chair, can I ask him?
Sure.
Can you come up, please? Hi.
Hi.
So would it be more feasible to do, like Supervisor Madron had said, with, like a pathway?
That would definitely be, bring it into a budget that could be workable. Like I say, under the current requirements, even without any of the infrastructure, other than the sidewalk, that's the sale of two lots, just to pay for the sidewalk, without any underground construction, without any road construction, plus all of the permitting and fees and everything else. So any way that we can reduce the cost, if it's a granite, crushed granite walkway, maybe with the fence to separate it from the road, that would definitely be appreciated.
And possibly maybe signage that says, you know, pedestrian walkway, which would make it, you know, very clear that that's where people should walk.
Correct, right.
I'm not sure about the fence, but.
Well, you know, the, you know, there would be a willingness to do that if it was required, but signage would definitely be installed to, to indicate that that's a walkway.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Sure, turn your mic on.
Well, I appreciate that response. As you've noted, there is this existing pedestrian right-of-way that goes from the north end of your north parcel all the way up to Blackbird. Sounds like the landowners weren't aware of it, but I assume it probably was on the title report, because it's an existing pedestrian easement, along with a drainage easement, as I mentioned earlier. As the culvert comes down, I'm assuming the culvert's underneath that road.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how that all came to be. I know that road used to go to my grandparents' house, and when the subdivision went through, that driveway was terminated there, because they then used the Sutter Ranch road system. But, and here again, I don't know how the whole right-of-way issue was developed, that was well before my time.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I can't eliminate the pedestrian easement, it's already been created there. But there was testimony about impacts from cars and quads coming through, trucks, quads, et cetera. Would you be amenable to doing that off-site improvement in terms of a DG pathway, not a sidewalk, all the way up to Blackbird, and perhaps at the north end of your parcel, bollards, as was suggested by one of the other supervisors, to prevent cars and quads, because you can put the bollards close enough together to prevent even quads from coming through? Would that be something you would entertain?
I would entertain it. Here again, I don't know what the ultimate cost would be, plus, you know, I have my neighbors here that may have concerns about pushing that side, that walk area all the way through, because that would definitely increase traffic, but I would have no opposition to putting in something to limit vehicular traffic through there.
Yeah, I can appreciate that concern. I don't want to put a bunch of traffic on them either, but eliminating the vehicle traffic would go a long way towards removing some of the concerns. And if it was a DG-type pathway, even though it would be an off-site improvement, it's still substantially less than doing a sidewalk just within, within the improvement. So I'm just trying to look for options to improve circulation and access for the community, in particular pedestrian safety.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Appreciate your response, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Professor Arroyo.
I know this is a tricky process, and we all are kind of coming at it from slightly different perspectives, I can appreciate that. And, you know, I, I'm hearing the concerns, and, and hearing some interest in maybe considering another alternative besides what the planning commission recommended, but I am, this is kind of bringing together two passions of mine, you know, pedestrian and bicycle safety, you know, safety for all users of, of public right-of-ways, as well as, you know, wanting to see more housing in our communities where, where that can be appropriately sighted. So I want to throw out there, at the risk of complicating this further, a different idea. So I know in the past, I feel like I'm watching a flashback to like 15 years ago, watching this board talk about complete streets and what that looks like in communities where there's lower-volume roadways. And I remember the curb gutter sidewalk wars of the past. I think it's like rehashing something that I've heard a long, long time ago. And I do recall a lot of discussion in years past about there being, about crushed granite having some flaws. Difficult to maintain over time, great at first, somewhat challenging to maintain over time with vegetation, and, you know, it, it does need a lot of maintenance, whereas either concrete or asphalt seems to have better outcomes in the long term. And one of the things that I've seen proposed for a lot of lower volume, or like less, more cost-effective solutions for, for these lower-volume roads, is an asphalt path in lieu of a crushed granite path, but at grade with the roadway, so that the cost is a bit lower, but there's still that pedestrian access. And I'd be interested in seeing if this board likes that idea. I mean, essentially, in this particular situation, looking at the width of the, of the drive, it does seem like it could be essentially a wider roadway with really defined striping for pedestrians, or a separated asphalt path, but again, at that same grade as the road. And that could continue and connect to Blackbird on that easement. So that could be, you know, middle ground, where we would get that pedestrian access, that idea of bollards is great. And, you know, utilize that existing connection, make it really clear and defined, but probably have a much lower cost. So I'm, I'm curious if that would be something that, I don't know whether we want to start with you or them, to see if there's interest in that idea, as well as, you know, get staff input. So maybe I'll, I'll ask John first, do you have thoughts or feedback about that idea?
I think certainly asphalt would be better from a maintenance standpoint, long-term. I'm a little concerned about the ADA building code implications of having the asphalt connected to the street. It really would need to be separated from the street, and then designed in such a way that it's as accessible as possible. That slope is never gonna be completely accessible, but I, I don't want to get into a situation where we're requiring something that's inconsistent with code.
Okay, and, and so that would, and I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of, for an example, I'm thinking of Old Arcade Road, where there's, and that is separated further than this would, I think, feasibly be, but it's, you know, an at-grade asphalt path, multi, multi-user group path. And, you know, that's the, the type of path that has come up for these areas where cost is a factor, and in my experiences before.
Mr. Professor Bushnell.
Well, I would say that certainly on Old Arcade Road, part of that was because it's the old road, so they just basically did a cut. But would it be, in the design currently, you have the, the sidewalk on one side of the road, and there was a concern that there would be a cut, or something to that effect in that space, due to, due to the slope. Would it make a big difference if the, if it was on the other side of the, of the road, and just basically swoop around at the end, so that we could still access the, the properties?
What the applicant is proposing to do is use as much of the existing roadbed as possible, and some of that is right along the edge of the western side. And so any improvements need to go east, and it slopes up, and so basically, in order to keep the cross-slope fairly level, you're having to cut into that hill.
And is there a way, I mean, are we meeting minimum road width standards? Is there, or can that be minimized in order to reduce costs, in order to not have a sidewalk go so much into the slope? Or was there like off-street parking issues in here?
So, the pavement section has already been reduced to 18 feet, which is really just two lanes of travel.
Okay.
That's two nine-foot lanes.
Right, and so the western edge of that is just the edge, the property boundary at the edge, or is there easement on that side?
And it drops off to the west.
Okay.
Could I maybe just interject something as well? On the west side, there is a PG&E pole that kind of butts up to the side of that driveway as well, which I think would kind of hinder a sidewalk going through on that. as well, which I think would kind of hinder a sidewalk going through on that side.
Okay. All right, hold on a second. So from, I appreciate Supervisor Arroyo's idea and suggestion in relation to asphalt, and I do understand your concern in terms of ADA, and I think we do have to be cognizant of that, because we don't want to have is developments that people are isolated if they have mobility issues. I mean, that is something where we really, I think that's something we need to be concerned about, and I don't know if there's a way to hybridize or adapt in some ways. I don't think that the connectivity that we're talking about, oh, gosh, I don't have it in front of me at the moment. Well, anyways, that additional pedestrian space needs to be concrete, probably asphalt. You can make, I mean asphalt, you can ADA that.
Asphalt can be made ADA compliant.
Yeah, okay, so I think that would be reasonable. I do think that without really, you know, without a real strong responsibility in terms of who is going to manage maintenance of that in the long term, I would prefer something a little bit more permanent versus the crushed gravel, because I do know that that can have some, I mean, someone's going to have to be weed-eating that constantly otherwise.
So you can sit down.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So those are my concerns.
If I could have a go back to just about this, there is a slope going up. I don't know the percentage when it's done, but it's fairly steep. And for pedestrians on DG or decomposed gravel, sorry, that could present a slip and a fall hazard, too. And I would just.
With that, is there going to be an issue with the slope for ADA then?
Well, that's why.
One and a half percent per 10 feet or whatever?
Really starting to say is it should have a hard surface on it.
Okay, and I agree, and I'm glad we got onto gravel rather than decomposed, because I don't, you're going to have to go down south to get that, and I don't know how much you're going to need. As we go forward on this, nobody's using the right-of-way now, and now we're talking about paving it, and then I heard striping it, and then I heard put bollards on it, and I'm visioning for, nobody, the people that live there now say, hardly anybody walks on it now. And I'm just, I don't know if this benefits the four houses or the four lots or five lots, whatever lots we're going to do out. We seem to do everything in our powers to stop building, and I'm just saying, they have connectivity now, the 58 lots at Sutter Ranch now, or I've been up there, they just don't have a shortcut. Is that what we're basically saying?
Well, you could put it in those terms. The way I would prefer to describe it is that there is an easement, there is an obligation there right now to provide that pedestrian connectivity. So that exists for the 68 lots, that also exists for the lots being created as part of this. It's a reasonable argument. I did not go back and find in the old records why that wasn't put in at the time. It was probably not put in at the time because the parcel that we're looking at today was not being subdivided at the time, and that's the majority segment of this improvement. And so it's you, it's very common to put off a requirement of a pedestrian path until that parcel is being constructed. And so that's where we really are.
The end of the development, basically.
Yeah, and so we're then talking about really what does it look like to address the needs that exist with having this pedestrian path there? And it could be a sidewalk, it could be a separated walkway, and it will serve not only this development, but the intended other lots that are part of the Sutter Ranch, because that's, that was the plan that was laid in place 25 years or more ago.
Probably been nice if the people that bought their houses 25 years ago knew about it. Supervisor Madron.
Before, I wanted to say one other thing. There has been a lot of discussion about the cost of sidewalks, and the planning commission undertook a very lengthy discussion about this a couple of years ago in terms of trying to have housing get built and housing be affordable. It's not, it's not an unreasonable discussion to have in terms of the sidewalks. But then the trade-off is if we want to encourage people to be able to walk and feel safe walking, there needs to be safe places for them to walk.
And I, I agree with you, and I've been, you know, for quite a while, but I walk in the mornings and stuff when it's dark on walnut and stuff like that. And I don't have very many sidewalks. I have a bicycle lane on a major, major thoroughfare that gets a lot of people walking on it. I mean, I actually see numerous people bicycling and walking on it, so. And majority has no sidewalks, so. It has a wide lane, but doesn't have sidewalks, so, I mean, okay. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been up that road, and it's well over 5% grade the entire way. It's a steep road, so I don't believe it's ever going to meet ADA. But I do think a separate pathway is important, and I appreciate the comments about asphalt rather than DG in terms of maintenance and slip failure and all those kinds of other issues. It still would be substantially less cost than doing concrete curb gutters and sidewalks. So I'm going to make a motion, and I'm not quite sure how to do this, so I'm just going to ask for a little guidance as I make it here to get it right. But if what we want to have as a board would be a separate asphalt pathway adjacent to the road on this subdivision that goes to the north end, and then the pathway, asphalt pathway, would continue up to Blackbird with bollards at that intersection of properties and a post and cable fence on the easement that's part of the Blackbird Avenue subdivision area, the old Sutter Ranch subdivision. So if I wanted to make the motion to require those requirements, would we be denying the appeal and then but add these conditions? Would that be the appropriate way to?
It would be to deny the appeal, approve it subject to modified conditions.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. So I'm going to make a motion to deny the appeal, but to add the additional conditions of a separate asphalt pathway on this subdivision from Sutter Road to the north end of the subdivision, and extend that asphalt pathway to Blackbird on the existing pedestrian easement that was fully intended to become part of this process, but with a post and cable fence along the western edge of that pedestrian pathway to help delineate the property for the property owners, so people stay on the pathway, and bollards at the intersection of the Sutter Ranch and this subdivision, so that vehicles would not be going through this easement.
Could I make a suggestion?
Please.
That as you do that, you modify the evidence in finding number five, and the finding is improvements have been conditioned to ensure the safe and orderly movement of people and vehicles. To add additional evidence to indicate that there is an existing pedestrian non-exclusive easement across this parcel and the parcel to the north. And in order to fulfill that easement, improvements have been required to install an asphalt walkway with the cable fence and bollards to preclude vehicular access.
I would add that, and I guess you could also refer to MCCP where it says that, "or off-street pedestrian ways." That also helps document evidence within the code. So that would be the motion.
Well, second thought, I am wondering, because the separated path potentially, I'm wondering if you want to say how wide it needs to be, essentially, because the curb, the standard sidewalk width is five feet, then with the curb and the roadway provisions, it was a defined width, whereas now this isn't clearly defined, and it actually, I believe, will take more, a little bit more right-of-way to have a separated asphalt path because the curb gutter sidewalk is so close to the edge of roadway. So I wonder if that needs to be spelled out, or whether that's to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department or some other language in there.
I would be comfortable with to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department.
Are you comfortable with that?
And since we get up here and make all these decisions for people that we'll probably never see again, can we make sure the property owners, we're talking about a cable fence and a post and cable, if they're comfortable with that kind of a structure? And the other thing is, could we do vehicular restrictions rather than bollards? Basically, they could put a two-ton rock in there if they wanted or something like that, because bollards looks, we're really making this look industrial as hell. And bollards, I mean, you're taking the Sutter Ranch area, I would, still has a somewhat rural feel to it, and it would be a lot easier just to throw a two-ton rock in the middle of it than everybody walks around.
Fine with that, too.
I'm just, so we don't have a big yellow bollard, and that I'd like the neighbors to be at least consulted, since they're the ones that are being impacted. Because the other thing that's got me a little concerned, if that is a right-of-way walking and there is, I keep hearing that culvert, and if it's a PG&E right-of-way, I am not so sure we're going to be able to pavement or concrete over it, because they're going to want access to it. You're seeing it now with them exposing, they're trying to do the timber both under power lines and above the gas lines. You saw when they came through and did the gas line. So we're going to have to really find out if we're going to be able to put a permanent structure. We may be limited to.
Director Madsen, are you familiar with where the culvert is in that? Yes, it is on. Are you familiar with where the culvert is? I assume it's down the middle, but I don't know. I know where it's at on the north side of Blackbird. We dealt with that just a couple of months ago.
No, I am not specifically familiar with it, but it's within the easement, and we generally, we pave over a lot of culverts, so I'm not concerned about the culvert.
The culvert I'm not concerned about, I'm talking PG&E. PG&E gets really sticky about going over if there's, if they have an underground right-of-way.
Well, any construction, any construction's going to have to do a USA to find out specifically where everything is anyway, and then you'll have to design around it. That's the first step in construction, and it's basically calling that USA to know what's underground before you touch it.
Through the chair.
Sure.
I mean, I'm not particular on the design of the fence. I think maybe it's something to be negotiated between the property owner and the developer. So long as it meets our basic standards in terms of line of sight and other requirements as per our code, it seems to me that would be reasonable. And there's already a fence there now on one side, so. And I would want it to, in that, the demarcation of that is, would be the width of the pedestrian right-of-way. I think that's reasonable, so, thank you.
I would agree with that modification as well. I think, you know, trying to work it out between the landowner on the north side and the developer and Public Works is a good approach, trying to find the flexibility. I mean, the thing I like about this is it's really given us an opportunity to fulfill the vision of the original Sutter Ranch, that put this easement aside for this connectivity possibility. It is a shortcut, and I think it would be a nice one, but it'd be nice to keep the cars out.
If I may, this idea of this being a shortcut is sort of a weird thing. I want to put out there that we have connectivity, it's connectivity, nothing's a shortcut. I mean, that's just like saying my road's a shortcut, that's a shortcut. This is connectivity, it's reasonable connectivity, it's not shorting anything, actually, it's making the neighborhood more walkable, more safe, and so I just move away from that. Thanks.
Okay, everybody lives out there, just more walkable, it's not a shortcut.
Can we vote? Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
And Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
All our hearings are closed. Now we're going to jump right into letters of support for 460 and 1337. And these are brought to us by Supervisor Arroyo and Supervisor Madron.
I don't have too much to add besides what was in the staff report. I appreciate the consideration of this and look forward to hearing any public comment that there might be about this, and we'll add more comments after.
Yeah, I was down in Salinas Thursday and Friday, and actually, this was quite a bit on everybody's tongue on the ranchers down there. We toured a few ranches and stuff, so I, I can't support it in any way, because basically the Farm Bureau opposes it. My dairymen, this weekend, we talked about it, they're pretty much opposed to it. We're doing a pretty good job of driving agriculture out of California, and we put more regulations on their water, and we're even going after, I think it's very important, they're going after pre-1914 water rights also. And I don't know if giving the power to the state water board without constitutional references or anything else is probably the best way to go, so I've got to oppose it. Just because our, as I said earlier, once we were the number-one agricultural county in the state, and we still do pretty good with our dairy, we're number-one in organic beef, and none of our farmers and dairymen actually see any benefit. Actually, they see quite a negative to this. It's reactionary. Maybe redoing the administration end of the water would be good, but to overlap it into this, and this died last year, and then I see it just got pushed out of appropriations yesterday, but.
Are we talking about 460 and 1337 together right now?
Yeah, I'm talking about.
460 is the first one. I don't know if you want to take them both together or not.
They're.
They're two different items. So 460, just to clarify, is the one that makes it, makes there be a higher cost to illegally diverting water. That, I think, is the first one of the two.
Okay. Go ahead, Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, and 460 is based on the fact that, in fact, last year and in several years in the recent drought periods, there were water diverters that diverted and just took the fines, because the fines were so small, they really had no effect on actually protecting that water for our endangered species, our fishermen and others that are also part of our economy. And so really, this one is just simply that, trying to raise those fees to the point where it actually has an impact and tries to keep people working within their existing rights.
A public comment?
Being the only person from the public here still, I wish to make comment on this.
Being the only person from the public here still, I wish to make comment on this. I think it would be very hard for anybody to not be in favor of this particular portion. The next one I would like to hear a little bit more about, but to, to eliminate the diversions, put some teeth into it. And my, my understanding was, there's one of these two things, makes the response time immediate, rather than, hey, going through a process and coming in two or three weeks later, or six months, or whatever it takes to get them to cease. Strongly support this, and I really appreciate both Supervisor Madron and Supervisor Royal bringing it to our attention.
Chair Bone, I have two callers in Zoom.
Please.
Caller 9165, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes. I see you're muted. Can you hear us?
Yes, sorry about that. This is Alex Whitmer on behalf of California Trout and Trout Unlimited. We're sponsoring AB460. Really, really appreciate the board bringing this up and the consideration of supporting these bills. Just to clarify, a comment that was made previously, this bill didn't die last year. In California, we have a two-year session in legislature, so this was made into a two-year bill, but is, is alive and is going to send it natural resources in a couple of weeks. So it would be great to have the Humboldt County Board Supervisors in support in advance of that hearing. And just to kind of underscore what was already said, AB460 really just helps better enforce existing laws. We've seen blatant disregard of these laws, as was mentioned in previous comments. And if actors aren't breaking the law, this won't apply to them. It also does allow the Water Board to act faster. Salmon cannot wait for multiple weeks for, for the state to be able to act. This allows the Water Board to issue an interim relief order with there is imminent and irreparable harm, and that is a pretty high threshold to be held to. And I think, you know, what we've seen, especially in drought years, in our rivers up north, is that, you know, the salmon are dying. This is the second year we've had the fishery closed. So we really cannot risk letting folks steal water without proper enforcement. We, and I urge your, urge your support for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, eight, I'm sorry, 8859, star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Alicia Hayman from Friends of the Eel River. You know, in Humboldt County, perhaps more than anywhere else in the state, our regional economy and cultures really depend on healthy rivers. Our rivers are also biodiversity hotspot, and they provide keystone habitats for a variety of significant species that really depend on rivers like the Klamath and the Eel to exist elsewhere in their, you know, throughout their entire run. This is why it's important to have a clear understanding of how much water people are using and also be able to effectively enforce the existing regulations. So AB460, it gives the Water Board stronger authority to stop illegal diversions, as well as the ability to increase penalties for water rights violations. You know, this is really important, because like a couple of people have already said, the Water Board currently lacks the necessary tools to really meaningfully enforce our water rights regulations. And, you know, it just kind of makes me wonder, like, why make people comply with regulations if the violators are just going to continue, you know, breaking the law because they face such minimal penalties? So I appreciate the staff recommendation to provide a letter of support for this bill, and I highly encourage your board to follow that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is 5459, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Natalie Brown with the Playing Conservation League. I'm also in support of this issue. The State Water Board needs the proper authority to enforce our water rights, because the dash of water and the current seas that come with that is just, at this point, a cost of business and downstream users, and the salmon that run in the rivers really depend on this system working as it should. I think this is common sense legislation to get faster action and more effective action to protect our waters and the salmon and everyone who depends on them. So for that reason, and the reasons encouraged by the previous speakers, I really urge your support on this issue.
Thank you. Next caller, 2223, star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good morning. This is Craig Johnson calling, and I'm calling to oppose the support of this. I feel it is more overreach, and more regulations do not mean for better compliance. I feel there's plenty of framework to keep our water controlled and safe, and I feel once again, if we're going to look at Humboldt County, and this is the group that we are focusing on, we're not looking at the state at this moment, our, our focus group here is Humboldt County, and the ag producers in Humboldt County need support. This would go against the ag producers here in Humboldt County. For the most part, they are all smaller, whether you're raising cattle or, or growing alfalfa. They are all smaller, and we're getting caught up in a drag net here once again. So I feel we cannot support this, and we need to support our food producers here in Humboldt County. We really need to think about where food comes from and look at the lens that this focuses on, and this is a statewide issue, and we need to think about how it affects Humboldt County, and this is negative for Humboldt County. We do want to keep the environment in check and, and supported, and I feel we have that already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last caller, 8294, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hey, this is Craig Tucker. I'm a consultant for the Karuk tribe. The one thing I would say that I agree with the previous speaker is our food producers need support, and one of the major food producers in Humboldt County are fishermen. We're in the second year of having salmon fishing closed in the Klamath, the Trinity, the Mad, the McCullum, and I think most of the rivers in the state of California, in addition to closed fishing offshore by commercial fishermen. We need to give regulatory agencies like the State Water Board more power to keep watering our rivers, ensure that our salmon fisheries can recover for the next generation, so these important industries can survive, and so that the Ruk tribe and other tribes in this region that depend on salmon can depend that salmon will be here. So we endorse signing on to these pieces of legislation, and we appreciate the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we have one more hand. 9431, star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Matt Swift. I'm the California Director for Tribe Unlimited, and I just wanted to say that we were in support of the resolution for AB460. And just that, this bill is really designed to give the Water Board the enforcement capacity it frankly needs. In, in, if there's anything we've seen in the past 10 years of drought spells we've had in California, that the push comes to shove, the Water Board, although it's supposed to be in charge of managing water for the state, doesn't always have the tools that need to do that. This is a very simple bill, it's simply designed to up the enforcement tools of the board to go after people who violate actual terms of water rights or orders in the board. There's nothing in this that should be of concern or bother the people who actually are following the law. It's only in the egregious cases, like we saw in the Shasta River back in 2022, where it was open to fines for the Water Board quarter. We just found that the Water Board didn't have the, you know, the authority it had to actually make, you know, provided sense to follow, you know, water management directives in the middle of the most extreme droughts in state, you know, in the state's history. And so it's a, it's a relatively common sense measure to simply up the available fines, not the mandatory fines, but the available fines to cover a broader range of situations to get people to comply and to allow the board to order interim relief, just like a court would, so that they can preserve the status quo in an emergency and get people to stop harmful activity on the ground pending a resolution of the case. And so we think these are common sense, modern authorities that the board should have, frankly, other agencies have, to, to fulfill their duties, and really hope that, you know, it's a common sense kind of thing that the county can support. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Bone, that is the last caller.
All right. Well, yeah, like I said last week, the, both of these bills are being opposed greatly by Farm Bureau, Aqua, which I guess covers almost 90% of all water deliveries in the state of California, 460 different agencies. We're taking what has been our water rights for the last, whatever years, and you're right, I think it was mentioned that the Klamath, the, the problem they had up north in the Klamath has created some of this situation, so we're going to react very quickly and see what we can do. No offense, but I don't know if government can, I, I just, I just can't support it, just for the basic reason that the, the people that are handling the water, I mean, right now, I wish we fought as hard to get site reservoir, and we haven't built any more water storage since there were 14 million people in California. Now we're knocking it 40 million. But what this does is water rights, water rights and water insecure properties are becoming, not being able to get money loaned on them, and if slowly but surely, we're going to get to the point where we aren't even the ag capital of the United States anymore, let alone the world. So I just, I can't support it. I just, I, I think it's too knee-jerk. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I would move that we authorize the chair to sign the attached letter of support for California Assembly Bill 460.
Second. It's moved to the second. Nikki, want to call for the, Michelle?
Thank you. I also am not going to be supporting this, just as the last caller said, the last caller said, there is no due process that happens, and they're not, the State Water Board isn't a court of law, and also a third-party competition, the State Water Board, to take swift action, and I'm not okay with, if it was just that fines could be increased and water diverters were addressed just simply with that language, but there is more to the bill, there, there is more language in the bill than just that. And so for that reason, I won't be supporting.
And I'm going to support our local agricultural community. Basically, yeah.
Okay, ready for the vote? Just to clarify, or just to put it back out in the public, Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah.
Supervisor Bushnell?
No.
And Chair Bone?
Nope.
Thank you. Motion carries three to two.
All right, we'll go on to the next item. Do we have time? It just, I'm going to ask, it's going to be the same argument, basically. Supervisor Madron, you brought this, I believe?
Uh, yeah, well, both myself and Supervisor Royal...
Yes, she did.
And this one has to do with water rights.
Excuse me, what?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
This, this particular bill has more to do with overall water rights. There is a, a date of 1914, where if you have water rights before then, they are far less regulated, and if you have water rights after that, they're more regulated. And if we're in a severe drought and it's going to impact our fisheries, then by passing this bill, it would provide an even playing field for all those water right holders. I heard a lot of talk about ag here in the previous bill, but, you know, at one time Humboldt County was also known as the prime fisheries county in, in California, especially for salmon and steelhead, and we know how that has gone. So this is trying to help protect a very important component of our community as well, and that is the fishing community that supports many of our towns like Shelter Cove, Trinidad, as well as Eureka, with all the various ports and docks. So I think this is a good bill. It tries to level the playing field, and it basically says that if there's not enough water to go around, then everybody ought to be treated equally. So that's the short version of this, but perhaps Supervisor Royal may want to add additional information.
Supervisor.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is intended to address the concerns about water being over-allocated and there being no consistent and fair system for allocating it. But the pre-1914 water rights are, you know, there's an equity consideration here that's addressed in the letter, but, you know, prior to 1914, black people couldn't have water rights. A lot of Asian people could not, who were, you know, part of the agricultural community, could not secure water rights prior to 1914, and many tribes could not either. So the Yoroc tribe does hold pre-1914 water rights in Humboldt County, and I spoke with Vice Chair Myers to make sure there were, you know, no outstanding concerns with bringing this forward. So that was appreciated. Appreciate his input. They recognized, well, I don't want to say, represent the perspectives of the whole Yoroc tribe, but I didn't hear any opposition to us bringing this forward. And I will just note, I, I think this is going to be a more complex one, and I can understand how there are a lot of folks with pre-1914 water rights that don't want to see these changes made, but I still think it's a, a statement of essentially my moral perspective on water rights allocations and that, you know, they should be considered fairly and equally statewide, and that's really what my support for this is about.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Thank you for speaking to the Yoroc tribe. I was wondering if you had spoken to, like, the Farm Bureau or any ranchers or anybody that had those pre-19 rights and got them the perspective?
There's a list of about 180 water rights holders in Humboldt County, so I did not have a chance to talk to all of them about it. Again, this would be something that's taken up in committee with the state, and there's, there's plenty of opposition and plenty of support for this. So I, yeah, I, I wanted to reach out to the Yoroc tribe. In part, there's been a lot of input from tribes about this, in part because of that equity issue, and so I did reach out to them.
Yeah, Paul, public comment?
Due to what I said last time, I'm sure that Supervisor Bushnell probably did reach out to those people and probably is making, going to make comment regarding what their feelings were. I personally believe I have some of the largest wells in the Mad River watershed that probably give me that right. They're not currently operating, which I'm glad they're not, because I probably could pump the aquifer dry with those down in the Christie Field out there. I, I feel that having an equal playing field is important. This is not a knee-jerk thing, in my opinion. In my opinion, this is way past due. This should have happened seven or eight years ago, when all of our, a lot of our agriculture here were putting illegal straws into the aquifers, which has put us in the position we're at right now. I do suggest that if somebody makes a motion, that they do more than authorize the chair to sign the attached letter, because of course, that would be at his discretion whether to do it or not. I, and from the apparent vote, he probably wouldn't. So I'd say, I would suggest you change the verbiage in that to say, require the, the chair to sign this letter. Strongly support all water use. I strongly support, and find it more than a coincidence, that people connected with a certain business known as cannabis would be the main ones opposing this. I strongly support the farmers' rights. I strongly support their ability to continue to exercise their rights, which they've established on an equal playing field. And, you know, water is one of the most important commodities we have here. The fishery needs to come back, as spoken to by the consultant from the Yoroc tribe. Appreciate Supervisor Royal reaching out to Frankie, and I'm just guessing that all the other tribes will concur with the need to move forward with this. Thank you. We're up to you to speak.
Thank you.
Chair Bone, I have three callers in the queue at this point.
Please.
9165, star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Alex Whitmer, again, on behalf of California Trout. I just wanted to maybe clarify another point that was made earlier. I don't think AB 1337 is really going after pre-1914 water rights. It's simply asking that the state treat them equally in times of drought and curtailment. As was mentioned previously by Supervisor Royal, white men were the only ones who could own water rights before 1914, and that legacy definitely carries forward today, with by far the majority of pre-1914 water rights being held by white families that have been passed down through the generations. Tribes could not own any property prior to 1914, so it's time that we really take a step forward. property prior to 1914, so it's time that we really take a step forward in modernizing and creating a more equitable water rights system, this is a very modest step, and would strongly urge your support of this, thank you so much.
Thank you, and next, 8859, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Alicia Hayman, again, from Friends of the Eel River, you know, as we face changing climate conditions and less predictable water supply, water shortages are becoming increasingly common, and in these times, it's important that all water users practice conservation, because everyone deserves access to clean water, not just those who establish water rights before others, and as Supervisor Arroyo noted, not everyone even had the opportunity to establish those water rights prior to 1914, I'd also like to emphasize that even some agricultural users and local food producers may not have 100-year-old water rights, so newer farmers also deserve a fair system, California's water rights system is over 100 years old, and in really desperate need of updates to make it more functional, as well as more equitable, I'll add too, that in the past decade, we've seen the lower eel go completely dry twice, this is something that was virtually unheard of in past decades, and we really need to better manage water use to ensure that we give aquatic species the habitat that they need to survive, so AB 1337 gives the Water Board the authority just to curtail pre-1914 water rights when necessary, as they do all other water rights, it's an important step toward adding equity to our current water rights system, and again, I appreciate the staff's recommendation to provide a letter of support for this bill, and highly encourage your board to follow that recommendation, thank you.
Thank you, next caller, 9431, star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Matt Clifford, again, with Trout, and just want to echo the comments of the last two callers, and strong support of this bill, I think even, at least as much as the last bill we discussed, this is simply out of common sense, the state water board is charged by law, the agency, we call on by law to manage water in real time, in times of shortage, and as we've seen, those times of shortage are getting much more frequent than they used to be, with climate change, they're going to become even more frequent yet, and the board simply can't do that job effectively in real time, if it only has control over half of the water users out there, half the water rights in the system, I mean, imagine trying to be a traffic cop, and, you know, direct traffic, and imagine additionally, if only half the cars in the road were listening to you, it just doesn't make any sense, and so this, again, is a common sense tool to correct existing law, to give the Water Board the tools it needs to manage resources effectively, and that's going to benefit everyone, by the way, it's not simply fish, it's also communities that have water rights, it's senior water rights holders themselves, pre-14 rights are simply not, are obviously not second-class systems, it's the oldest rights in the system, and generally are going to have seniority, but the water needs to have this tool to do its job effectively, so we urge the county to support this bill, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, last caller, 5459, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
County Conservation League, I really appreciate the board considering this item, and I strongly support Humboldt County supporting AB 1337, like has been said, this is not a knee-jerk reaction, and it's a crucial and long-needed step that the state is finally starting to take, it doesn't uproot the seniority system that exists, or throw out anything about the existing water management system, it simply creates a level and more equitable playing field where the board can curtail pre-1914 water rights when there isn't enough water available for their order of priority, not some crazy new system, this is common sense and practical, because as California faces a hotter and drier climate, and water shortages become increasingly common, our ability to curtail water rights is essential to maintaining a functional system, the board needs to be able to direct all water users in order to deal with this increasing drought reality, not just the more recent half, this is a common sense solution with benefits for everyone, fisheries, communities, and other water users, as mentioned, and it has a huge coalition of supporters that really, really need effective regulation, and the state's ability to curtail when needed, thank you so much.
Thank you, and Chair Bone, that's the last caller.
Thanks, Nikki. Bring it back to the board.
I'll move approval of the letter, and it hadn't occurred to me that the letter might not get signed and sent, so I guess I'll ask, do you, if the board passes these letters, do you intend to sign and send them, Supervisor Bone?
It's the third time I've served in, as chair, and I serve at the pleasure of the board, if the board is asking me to sign a letter, I don't become singularly, because there's probably be a few I hadn't signed.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
So, it shouldn't even be asked, but I mean, just so, proper, proper call, I mean, we can hear what we want to hear, but I've signed every letter, like I said, this is the third time I've done it, so.
Okay, it hadn't occurred to me, and I will say that when I was in the Eureka City Council, there were actions that our council took that the chair decided not to act on, so I, I don't ask it because of any particular feeling towards you.
I didn't know you had a chair.
The mayor, but if, you know.
But the mayor's a non-voting person, I'm a voting person, anyway, go ahead.
I, I've been in this position before, where it hasn't been done, and it was a surprise, so I'm just wanting to make sure that, that, you know, that's our intention, all right.
With that, I'll confidently second. Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
For the Fisher folk and all water rights users, yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
No.
Supervisor Bone?
No.
Thank you, motion carries three to two.
What are our time sets, at one today?
Eleven thirty.
Oh, eleven, oh, we have that one, eleven thirty, yeah. Yeah. You want to read that?
Thank you, Chair Bone, it is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the matter of Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Project Number 77-285.
Any public comment on this item, please?
We seem to have a lot of water topics on there, I'm not exactly sure what the existing litigation is, all I can say is whatever you can do to make sure that the water stays in the Eel River, and does not get pumped over the hill, for any reason, shape, or form, I believe it belongs here where Mother Nature put it, and I strongly suggest that if we're litigating to make that happen, it's money well spent, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Lastly, what time do you expect to come back, is that not till one?
I'm getting there.
Thank you.
Nikki, nothing? All right, we're going into closed session, and then I'm going to ask Nikki, if you could have somebody call Area 1 on Aging, and push them back till 1:30, and we'll be back in here at 1:30, we don't expect, how long do you expect this to take, Scott? It's just an update, right?
I would say fifteen to twenty minutes.
Okay, we'll come back at 1:30. With that, see you at 1:30 or so. We are now going to move forward with, Nikki, are we zooming, Maggie?
Chair Bone, we need to report out.
You might need to report out, too, I just want to make sure she had, please report out.
Thank you, Chair Bone.
I love that.
There was no reportable action taken with regard to Item G1.
Good thing we got that out there.
And yes, Maggie's on.
Well, tell her she's on, literally.
Hi, there.
Supervisor Madron is presenting this, I guess, right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, so this is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, County of Humboldt, in honor of Older Americans Month, whereas the County of Humboldt includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge, and whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently, and whereas the County of Humboldt wants its older residents to have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, now therefore, the County of Humboldt Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 2024 to be Older Americans Month, this year's theme, Powered by Connection, Powered by Connection, emphasizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connection on the well-being and health of older adults in our community, and urges residents to join in promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. Now, we'll mail this over to you, Maggie.
With that?
Thank you so much.
There you go.
Thank you so much, it's good to see you, I apologize for not being there today, I'm just a little bit under the weather, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak to you and to receive this proclamation, I think the proclamation speaks for itself about the value of intergenerational interactions, and, and as a way to fight ageism, the more we know people in different generations, the more we realize that we're all the same, we've just, we're just on a different part of our journey, so I thank you for that, I really do appreciate it today, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think I was also supposed to give you a brief update.
Yes, please.
Okay, well, it's not great news, but there is, as we all know, the state budget is, is in trouble, and we know how, how much that impacts local government budgets, and it also impacts the funding that we're receiving through the state, they are proposing a cut of $111 million in funding for meal programs for, throughout the state, and while we are a small area, that still amounts to $850,000 in cuts over the next three years, that's a lot of meals in our, in our area, and even though we don't receive as much money as the more urban populations, we, we see a lot of poverty and a lot of difficulty getting food here for a lot of our elders, costs are higher, transportation costs are higher, getting out and getting to meals, or getting to grocery stores, so this will be a big impact on our two meal providers, Humboldt Senior Resource Center, and also Del Norte Senior Center, who are really working hard to, to meet the need, the need was really large during COVID, but we haven't seen it drop down a lot, because once people learned about the services and realized that they could get nutritious meals that they hadn't been getting, they're, they're now doing that, so we don't know, there's a lot of cuts in the state budget, this is one of many that are being proposed, if this is something that you are concerned about for your local neighbors, please reach out to the state and let them know that this particular cut, which is not a huge amount of money in terms of the state deficit, but it will have a huge impact on, on thousands of seniors across the state, and, and in our local area, so I wanted to alert you to that, I know there's other things you're looking at and seeing around budget cuts, but I, I wanted to let you know about that, because it might sneak past us if I didn't mention it, I don't know if there's any questions on that.
Seeing none, no.
Okay, and the other thing I wanted to mention was, there is a, a bill that is being, it's going through the process, it's Senate Bill 1249, and Senator Roth is the sponsor, and it is being pushed by the Department of Aging at the state level to do some things to update the, the area agencies on aging, and related to the Older Americans Act changes, and just the fact that there hasn't been a major update to some things within this system for many years, however, one of the, one of the, the pushes with the bill is to really look at the location of where an area agency sits, in, in our area, the area agency sits in a nonprofit, Area 1 Agency on Aging, and that was started in 1980, a decision made by the two counties, and this nonprofit to rather than have it be done as a joint power, have it come out of a, of a nonprofit, and, and we've done that since 1980, and what they're proposing now is that they give all the counties throughout the state who are currently either part of a joint power authority, or being served by a nonprofit, and multi, multiple counties like ours, to give all the counties the opportunity to petition or request that they be considered to be the area agents on aging for that county, and the proposal is, is implying that this would be a cost neutral, and so many of us are concerned about the impact that would have if, say, in a, in a area agency that has five counties, and one area agency right now, that one of those counties, maybe the larger county, would step forward and say, we want to run our own area agency on aging, and that would thus leave the other four counties, that might be smaller and, and more rural, kind of out on their own to figure out how to provide all these different services, and do all the bureaucratic work that we're required to do as an area agency, without the, without the adequate funding to do that, so this is something that's going through the system, and, and there's other pieces to the bill about updating, doing some updating around how, how area agencies are all different, even though we have, it's not that, we're, we're supposed to be different, the Older Americans Act states that while there are certain things we're supposed to do, local control is really important, so that you, you provide services in a way that meet the needs, that are locally determined, and based on us doing outreach, and an area plan, and interacting with local government and local organizations, the state, even though that exists, the state wants to see us more conform and provide the same types of services, and the same, which we already do, but, but they seem to want to create a system that everything is, that no matter where you are in the state, you get the same services, we applaud that, but the amount of money they provide to, in this system, does not make that possible, people in Del Norte do not get the same services that people in San Francisco get, it's a matter of the money, and the money is funded, is sent out based on population, so there are fewer resources in our rural communities, and fewer, less money coming to our local areas, as you all know, for, for all the county services, because the way the money is spent and sent down has a lot to do with population, and that makes sense to some extent, but in rural areas, we all know how difficult it is when you don't have enough money to, to hire the staff to provide the medical care, and the different types of services that you need to have the same services across the entire state, so we're not sure how, how they're envisioning this to happen without a new onslaught of funding, so we're watching the bill closely, to see where it goes, to see the timing of these things, and, and how they, they foresee making this happen, we've been reaching out and talking to your staff about it, and also staff in Del Norte, to just make sure we're all working together to understand what this might mean, so I wanted to share that with you, and that's about it for today.
I'll bring it back to the board for questions. Supervisor Madron? Oh, Arroyo, jump on in there.
Okay, I think I was the only one with my hand up, I, I- I, I just wanted to kind of bring it back around to what, you know, what action are you wanting us to take around this issue with the recognition of the areas, the area agencies on aging? Sorry, that's always a mouthful. Just to help me understand, I understand the greater issue of how these are going to be apportioned funding and recognized as far as their role, but, but what action would you see coming from us to help with that issue?
I think right now, just to, to know, be aware that it is happening and it, and it could, depending on how this, this bill goes through the system and whether, and what it looks like when it passes, it might have impacts on the county. It's, yeah, it might have impacts on the county. There might be more pressure from the state to encourage counties to run the AAA's instead of the different formulas we have. Right now, there's 14 of us who are not county government, but, and we cover 39 of the 58 counties. So we just don't know what will happen going forward, but I, so for, for now, it's just for you to be aware. Our organization at this time is not, is not planning to say to anybody, we don't want to do this anymore. But if that were to occur in the future, the, the count, the state would definitely come to the counties and say, okay, now we want you to take a look at this and give you the first right of refusal, which is really what this is. So I don't think they can mandate that a county take it on. But it's just something for you to watch and be aware of because it could change some systems. They could decide that they want to put different AAA counties together in a different, in a different setup or system than we currently have. They might want to, the, the other part is changing the, the, what they call planning and service areas. So looking at population and looking at boundaries and maybe changing which counties are in which areas. If they're not all 58 area agencies on aging, how might they regroup us so that we might be part of a larger area agency and not just the two-county one, and how that might impact everybody?
Supervisor Madron?
Yes, I would move adoption of the proclamation and accept and file the update.
Second. They're moved and seconded? Public comment? Anybody online?
Yes, we do have one caller online, Chair Bone, 5288. Start to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Ken Swawski, when I was 65, I considered myself old. Now that I'm 70, I feel like I'm older. So I strongly support having as much local control, support what you're doing here. I do have a, you know, some people get mellow with age, other people get the opposite of mellow. I hope that we can all, as we age, mellow. I, I have a, have an acronym, and it's AIR. And then when you get old, it's, it's old air. So the acronym for AIR is arrogant, ignorant, and rude. And unfortunately, what was exhibited today by our chairperson, Rex Bone, I felt qualified him to be the poster child for old air. I want to apologize to Supervisor Arroyo personally, coming from the old people, for the way you were treated today. And I don't think it's proper for somebody just because they're old to be that way. Doesn't matter if I irritate him, I don't think he gives a darn what I think. But if he's irritated, there's no reason for, for us to not have the decorum that we had under Supervisor Steve Madron, who was also mature, but has, has, I think, mellowed with age.
Is this, is, I don't think this has anything to do with the...
Do we keep going with this? I, Rex, will you please quit interrupting me? I'm talking about...
Probably not.
I supported the topic.
No, stay on topic.
And will you please quit interrupting me? Let me finish my public comment. So I do support what was brought...
I'll catch y'all for that, but I don't know what he's talking about.
I can unmute him.
I appreciate being unmuted. And again, I would like to reiterate, I support the motion that's on the floor, and I hope that we all are able to behave as reasonable old people in our lives. Thank you for my opportunity to make public comment. Hopefully next time without being interrupted. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
That's it.
Anybody from the public? Seeing none? Nikki, you want to call for the vote?
Let's up to Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
Sure.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. We'll be in touch.
Thank you, Maggie.
I guess we'll move right on to the ordinance, what, I'm sorry.
Did you take a vote on that?
Yeah, we did, didn't we?
Did what?
We called for a vote. Do you want another one? Oh, child care. Well, there, what? We took a vote?
Have we had a public comment?
Have we had a public comment? I said, do you want to go to the smoking ordinance, or do you want to do the child care? All right, Mary Ann, come on up. Maybe not Mary Ann.
Whoever.
Okay. Afternoon, Chair Bone, members of the board. Sean Quincy with the County Administrative Office. This is just an update on the American Rescue Plan Act-funded Child Care Stabilization Fund that your board approved back in 2122. In May of last year, the program sponsors, our program administrators came and provided a one-year update to your board on what's been happening with the program. And as this is the single largest investment in new programming that your board made with that $26 million allocation of ARPA funding, we thought it would be worthy of a, of another update on where that program stands. So I will turn it over to Jade Hoff, Program Manager here.
My name is Jade Hoff, and I'm the Program Manager for the Humboldt Child Care Stabilization Fund. And I'm here to give our second annual update on how those programs are going. Before I begin, I would like to provide some context as to why you voted to fund these programs in the first place. Child care is a very important pillar of our local economy. Each childcare provider allows up to 12 workers to work outside the home. This provides the workforce that's necessary for Humboldt County businesses, and this economic growth rubbles out from there. Unfortunately, childcare providers tend to exit the industry pretty quickly. On average, they leave in about five years citing issues such as low income, lack of support, and lack of career growth. And this leads to issues with Humboldt families being able to access childcare. And this is a nationwide issue, and I just saw a nationwide study that was released by Motherly Magazine that more than two-thirds of Gen Z and millennial moms have considered leaving the workforce citing stress and the cost of childcare. So in 2022, you voted to allocate $4.86 million of our ARPA funds to support the childcare industry, and AEDC works to administer those programs. We work in conjunction with some great partners at Changing Tides, First Five Humboldt, the Humboldt County Office of Education, and the County of Humboldt Economic Development Division. We meet biweekly, and they keep us on track with the program administration. With the funding, we've created five core programs that are allocating the money directly into the hands of childcare workers and families and childcare businesses. These are the retention bonuses, hiring bonuses, forgivable facility loans, working family subsidies, and education support. So far, we have launched three of these programs. And so here's a, a brief timeline of our anticipated spend by December 2026. In September of 22, we launched the retention bonuses. And then last January, we launched the hiring bonuses. Last spring, we did the forgivable loans. And then coming up later this year, we have our parent subsidies and the education support Here's a snapshot of where we are on spending the money. So I have a year one total of over $681,000 across the three programs that, that have been launched. And then our year two, year-to-date total, the first three quarters, we have $893,000 spent across those same three programs. And then I have a graphical snapshot of where we are on the budget overall for each of those programs. So for the hiring bonus, we had $50,000 budgeted for hiring bonuses for part-time and full-time new childcare employees. And we've allocated just about $33,000, and we have $17,000 remaining. We did leverage this funding, and we're working with the Office of Education while they administer a very similar hiring bonus for specifically funded CSPP employees. And so we launched this program with the same eligibility requirements and the same funding amount for each of those types of employees, and we have just one application. So in addition to our $33,000 that's gone out on this, they've paid out $5,500. And that, that program will continue until the funding runs out, so we're still accepting applications on that. The retention bonus program, we paid out over two rounds. And so over those two rounds, we distributed $1,333,000 directly into the hands of childcare employees and, and business owners. We do have a bit remaining, and our plan for that is to issue a retention bonus to the hiring bonus recipients who were not eligible, obviously, to receive the retention bonus the first time. But if they've chosen to stay in the industry, we think that they should get a little something for that, too. And then the third program that we've launched has been extremely fun. This is a forgivable loan program. It's $10,000 SBA microloans that the childcare owners are able to invest in their businesses. Childcare facilities are really unique businesses. They don't usually see a dollar-for-dollar return on investment, so it's extremely hard for them to find traditional funding sources. And it can also be hard for them, you know, any, any investment that they make is coming directly out of their own pocket. So it's nice to be able to provide some funding to improve their businesses. And so as of March 31st, we had distributed 32 forgivable loans, 19 of which had met the forgiveness requirements. I've done an additional eight since then, but I just wanted to keep it to the quarter. And we have another nine loans in progress, so they're in underwriting or we're collecting documents, and they have approved projects. We're just working through the stages. And we are still accepting applications on this because we actually have quite a bit of funding left for this program. So, so far, we've spent over $200,000 on forgiven, on the forgiven loans, and then we have an additional $130,000 in outstanding principal. Our program does pay the interest during the project timeline, and we also are paying any of the loan origination fees. So it is a true $10,000 grant that the, that the childcare owners are getting. That being said, we have enough funding for an additional 20 loans. So I'm always looking for people who are interested in starting childcare businesses. As soon as they're licensed, they would be eligible to get this so that it could really get a family childcare home up off the ground with any sort of, like, safety equipment they might need or anything else. And this program is great because it comes with really fun before and after pictures, so I've got a few of those. So this is a project that we funded up in McKinleyville at Turner Learning Center. They had some very outdated cubbies that just weren't serving their classroom anymore. And so with our funding, they were able to get these custom-built cubbies for their space. They also improved their kitchen area, and so that's, that's been really appreciated. Here in Eureka, we funded this sun shade and some outdoor play equipment at a family childcare home. And so that's allowing, yes.
Could, just, because I couldn't tell, could you go back one?
Yes.
Which one's the new and which one's the improved?
The, the one on the right is the new one.
The ones on the flights, the new ones?
Is the new ones, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah. And same here. So the, on the right is, is the new and improved. And so this is allowing the children to play outside in more inclement weather. And her home actually gets quite a bit of sun, and it gets pretty hot in their playroom, so this is a really nice addition for them. Also, here in Eureka, we were able to help fund a large capital investment in a childcare facility. So this is Teacher's Pet over by, by St. Joe's. And so they needed a new roof. $10,000 didn't quite cut it, but she did have some savings, and this allowed them to invest in their, in their building, and will hopefully keep it as a childcare facility for years to come. And then finally, we just wrapped up this project out in Briceeland. This is at Beginnings. They had quite the ramshackle little fence there around their large play area that definitely needed replacing for safety reasons, and so we were really happy to be able to fund that for them. It was also nice to take a drive out there and get to take these before and after pictures and meet everybody. And here we have a testimonial from Kimberly Turner. She says, "Childcare is a marginal business with little discretionary income for larger projects without additional funding. This program gave us a rare opportunity to change our school environment to make the day-to-day operations run smoother. Thank you for facilitating this wonderful program in our community." And then we do have a couple more programs that we'll be launching later this year. So coming up this summer, we'll have our working family subsidies. So we're working to increase the subsidy for families who do not qualify for a full subsidy. And, yeah, so we've been working hard on our program design for this one because since these are families that are receiving subsidies, we want to make sure that any money that we give them to help with their childcare costs doesn't actually impact their income level because we don't want them to come off of any other social safety nets that they're on. So we're, we're working on maybe a scholarship or some other way to format this, this subsidy program, but we should be launching that later on this summer. And that, that one has actually the largest budget out of, out of any of the programs. So that one has $1.57 million, and I think it's going to go pretty fast. Once we open it up, I think it's going to go pretty fast. And then the final program that we'll be launching that is going to be money in hands directly to people is the Educational Support Program. And this one has been very interesting in the program design as well because our original stated goal in the contract was basically using this as a retention bonus. So it would be paying off student loans for people who are working in the childcare, in early childhood education, who have college loans. But as we've had conversations across the county, we've realized that there are a lot of opportunities for more targeted workforce development. And so we're exploring a lot of options to support especially our most rural areas to make sure that they have the childcare workforce they need. I know that there are childcare facilities, Beginnings, actually, they have, they have classrooms that they haven't been able to open because they don't have workforce with the necessary college credits to, to work there. So that's, this one's been, yeah, challenging, but in a, in a fun way. And we should be launching that in fall of 2024. And then we do have a couple of other programs that are a little bit more towards the sustainability and backend support for the childcare industry as a whole. So one that we'll be starting this summer is a childcare business flight, so an intensive series on how to run a childcare business. We're working in conjunction with the North Coast SBDC to launch this. So we invested in their curriculum, and we're really excited for... So we invested in their curriculum, and we're really excited for the for the first of this program to run this this year. But since they own the curriculum, they're planning on running it as often as there is demand for it. And this program will also be available in Spanish, so we'll have simultaneous Spanish interpretation available for that. And this is going to be free to anybody who is interested in opening a childcare business or if they're already in business and they just want to like kind of shore up their their fundamentals, this would be a really great program for them. And then finally, we have our Childcare Champions. This is where we're working on figuring out how to continue the momentum of the Humboldt, the stabilization fund programs. So the funding for this is running out in 2026. And so we're looking for how we can continue this work after that. And so we've convened a diverse group of business leaders, childcare experts, and leaders in all capacities to brainstorm about this. We've hired the California Center for Rural Policy to create a childcare needs assessment for us. So we've started doing large-scale data collection, and we will actually have a survey that's going to be going out to employees and employers in the county about what their childcare needs are, what their experience has been, how they like how they manage childcare for their families. And so we'll be launching that tomorrow. And yeah, so right now, we're in the data collection phase of our childcare sustainability quest. And we also meet quarterly, and we're working to identify policy and sustainability goals. And we're reviewing what's been done there. You know, there have been different approaches across the state and in other states. Like I said, childcare is definitely a nationwide issue, and we're working to build capacity with our childcare industry here. And then, yeah, we're working on advocacy, and our big audacious goal is to ensure that every family in Humboldt who wants or needs childcare has access to affordable, high-quality childcare.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board. Any questions? Sir, as well as.
I hear something about collecting data in there, and I was just kind of wondering, will we actually, I mean, get sort of like a comprehensive understanding of like how many jobs were saved, how many, you know, what what's the fundamental difference between the world with this program or the world without this program? And will we have that? I mean, I'm assuming it's all good.
Yeah.
But I but I'm just wondering if there's anything quantitative that we can take from that so that in the future, because what I'm seeing here is something that's going to end at some point.
Right.
We're going to have to make some decisions at that time, you know, about how and where we invest. And so having the data about where the money was spent and what impact it had, and all these different programs would be really helpful. And so will we have that quantitative?
Yeah, I believe that'll be part of the the white paper that CCRP is creating with the Childcare Champion. So we're really looking at what the childcare landscape has been post-COVID, and this is definitely a part of it. So, yeah, and looking to see what the needs are in the community, what what the costs are for running childcare, what are the hurdles, what are, yeah, we're looking at.
Thank you for the report. Kind of along the lines of what Supervisor Wilson said, I want to recognize that maybe there weren't all jobs were saved, like, you know, or that's not grabbable, but the difference that you made in the childcare facilities with this money is so important. And I know in the rural areas, Brysland, that area would have never been able to do the fencing, and it's really important out there. It's a very rural childcare center. And it's for the rural areas and even for not the rural areas. Childcare is is very difficult when you're a young mom, young dad, trying to work and trying to figure out how to even find childcare. There's just aren't that many providers. And so I just appreciate the work that you guys have done with that money and the childcare facilities that you have saved, and it's made them possible to move forward.
Supervisor Royal.
Thank you. I'll echo what Supervisor Wilson said. Just any data that we can have to lean on moving forward would be really helpful. And I'm curious if, since there seems to be plentiful funding for that revolving loan slash grant program component, if there are other needs that haven't been met, but there's not currently like a programmatic approach to to meeting them. I know that I've I've just heard that it's a lot of it is pay, and so obviously there are incentives to improve retention. But but are there any other strategies you all have thought of to kind of address that in the longer term with some of those funds that are remaining?
Yeah, so I end up seeing, anytime I see somebody who's interested in opening childcare, I reach out to them. So I'll see things in like Facebook mom groups and things like that where they're like, oh, I'm thinking about opening a childcare. And I, you know, DM them like, I have money. And so I really just try to encourage people any anytime I can to pursue that. And I've also reached out to childcare workers that I've met who've expressed that they were interested in possibly opening their own businesses and encouraged them. So, yeah, I definitely wanted to use some of the forgivable loan fund towards seed capital for new new businesses, not just maintaining what we have, but to hopefully grow our capacity.
And so has that happened, but I but I missed it in the presentation, the seed capital idea?
So we do ask that they get licensed. So part of the the requirements for the forgivable loan fund is that they that they are a licensed childcare facility. So they have to like put some, go through a few steps before they can access the funds. But I do have people who are very newly licensed who are accessing the funds. Yeah.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, and what's the threshold for forgiveness on the forgivable?
Yeah, so for the forgivable loans, they have six months to complete an approved project. So we we collect a project plan from them, and we make sure that it's going to be something that's going to benefit their their program long term. So we're not trying to fund things that are consumable goods. You know, we aren't going to do a forgivable loan for diapers or something like that. It has to be an actual capital improvement to their to their space. And then they have to go through the entire loan process and, you know, submit financials and all of that. And then once they've received the funds, they have six months to complete their project. They have to submit all of their receipts and everything, and I do a site visit before and after to ensure that everything's been completed. And so far, we've only had one that has gone over. So basic, so they have six months to do it with no payments. Our program makes all of the loan payments for them. After six months, they do become responsible for making loan payments until their project is complete. And we only have one that's about to make their very first payment. I think they're only going to make one. And then we we do forgiveness for the remainder of the balance after they've met the requirements.
Thanks. Good deal. All right. Saying, sure, go ahead. Were you going to make the motion?
I was going to see if you wanted to comment or not.
It doesn't matter. I'll take public comment.
I have a caller in the queue. Caller 5288, star six, ten mute, three minutes.
This is a fantastic program. Strongly support the comments made by you supporting Mike Wilson and his request there. And everybody pretty well knows that multigenerationally now, a lot of childcare is done by unlicensed people. It's done by grandparents. They take care of a lot of the kids. Otherwise, there's a lot of mothers who cross, take care of each other's children so they can go to work or do whatever they have to do. It's a great honor for us grandparents to to be able to. I have a couple of children that I will be taking care of for an hour or so, an important meeting for the mother. And I just hope that nothing I've said here Rex can understand, so he won't mute me. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
No more callers.
I always thought I was just a grandparent. Now I find out I'm an unlicensed daycare worker.
Supervisor Royal.
Oh, there's more people in Zoom? Oh, sorry.
They got to walk up here.
I just wanted to add one thing to, Jade was just talking about the data that we're looking at in the forgivable loans. Because we have people who have actually applied for loans, we have one of the best sets of data for what it actually costs to run a daycare that we've been able to get anywhere. And so we're really excited that we are going to be able to use that as well as what it costs to run a daycare and really see where those gaps are because it's been a really vague sort of nebulous number. And I just wanted to add that, too.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Royal.
I do just want to take the time to say thank you, and even though we're a little squirrely up here today, it's, I'm so grateful for the work that you're doing. And frankly, I know Susan has a lot of passion and love for this, and you are carrying out some amazing work. And I want to appreciate both of you for for focusing on this sector, for shining a light on it, and for trolling the Facebook groups to look for anyone who might possibly want to start a childcare center and all of that. Like, I can tell that it comes from a place of really understanding the need and caring about it deeply. And with that, I will move that we accept the report.
Second. Been moved to second?
Thank you, Chair Bone. I'll start with you.
Yep.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, guys.
Good afternoon, Chair Bone and your board. I'm Sophia Pereira. I'm the Public Health Director, and we'll just do a round of introductions real quick.
I'm Brianna Sherlock, Senior Program Manager for the Health and Communities at Lake Division.
And Mario Kelson, Director of Environmental Health.
We are here today to present to your board an amendment to the Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance that your board passed July 11th of 2024. This is ordinance number 2718, titled Comprehensive Tobacco Retailer Licensing Ordinance. And this ordinance intends to reduce youth's use of tobacco by enforcing state and local tobacco laws, such as the state's ban on flavored tobacco. We are currently rolling out implementation of this ordinance. Our Division of Environmental Health has processed applications for 55 out of the 57 retailers that have applied, and 51 so far have passed their inspections. So that's really exciting to see, being on the other side of this now. A lot of hard work has gone into building up this this program and working with retailers. And then our Healthy Communities and Environmental Health team are also providing educational meetings for retailers and providing a lot of support over, well over a year now, there's been a tremendous amount of communication with retailers, from written communications to in-person onsite visits, lots of follow-up. And we came to your board back in February, the 27th of February, with proposed amendments and received direction to return with an agenda item to amend two provisions in the TRL. I'm going to say TRL from here on out. So the the first one, First Amendment, would be to replace the five-feet rule that recent court precedence requires us to update. Your board supported coming back with language that would require products to be placed behind or under a counter and/or kept in a locked case to maintain protections around youth's access to tobacco products. The other amendment that we have for your board today is adding an exemption to the discounts and coupons provision to exempt cigars, loose leaf tobacco, and flavored shisha tobacco products as defined by state law. So those are why we are here, but just a little bit of overview around lock and storage, that amendment that would replace the five-feet rule. So after consulting with our staff and with county council, we proposed to your board an amendment that would require products to be placed, you know, behind or under a counter and or locked. Tobacco products would not be accessible to customers without assistance of a salesperson, and an exemption would be made for retailers that only permit persons 21 years and older to enter the tobacco retail for retail facilities, which I believe is only one retailer in unincorporated areas that would would have that exemption. This amendment still aims to address youth access to tobacco products and retail outlets and is really consistent with how almost all of the stores are already set up. Only six out of the 57 retailers would need to make minor adjustments. The retailers in question currently have tobacco products stored in clear plastic shelving that is not locked and placed on the countertop. And these shelves could either be replaced with similar locked shelving, or the products could be relocated behind or under the countertop. So just to give an idea that, you know, really, you know, the the impact here with that amendment, the gross majority of retailers are already complying with what this amendment would be under your board's approval. And as for the discounts and coupons provision, that was really out of our conversation around adding an exemption with your board's direction. As we know, discounts or coupons bring the price of commercial tobacco products down, which makes them more accessible to consumers and especially youth. Youth are shown to be two to three times more responsive to raising prices merely by eliminating discounts and coupons, which helps reduce youth use. So just to remind us of, you know, that provision we have in place, but what's before your board is to create an exemption specifically for cigars, loose leaf, and shisha products. So that is why we are here today, and we are happy to answer any questions that your board may have.
I had, we've got 51 licensed. So after we get the next three, do we stop giving out licenses since I think the ordinance calls for one per every 2,500 residents? Is that right? Right, is that right? Did I read that right?
Yeah, I think it is one for 2,500. And there's a there's a window of application time, but we want to encourage retailers to apply and come into the ordinance. And so we're regularly engaging staff from environmental health and staff from healthy communities and trying to assist operators with with things, resources that they need or if they have challenges for applying.
But what I'm saying is we're going to exceed that one in 20, we're at 54 or 55 somewhere near. We're going to exceed that one in 2,500. So in turn, there will be no more licenses issued? Is that what we're going to?
Yeah, basically, any tobacco retailer that currently exists, and just to build up what Mario was saying, is that, for example, you know, through this process, we identified there was a retailer that wasn't on anyone's radar as a tobacco retailer. And so we were able to do follow-up engagement with that retailer, and we're not holding them to the same timeline as all the other retailers that were on our radar that have been receiving communications for well over a year. So our intention is to make sure that we're involving any existing tobacco retailers in the process. And yes, you're right that
I agree.
The cap exists, but we want to obviously engage anyone that's currently a tobacco retailer.
Currently, but we're going to run this kind of like a liquor license. If we hit the maximum, there's going to be no more allowed, right? Is that no new business, no new
Yeah.
No new grocery store, no new
Yeah.
Big box or anything. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Supervisor Bushnell?
So that that cap, though, is unincorporated?
Yes, unincorporated.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of tobacco retailers in incorporated areas.
Yes.
So and that leads to my next question. Have you had engagement with other cities and are they, what's the feel if you have?
You know, I know that we've done some education with other cities, and we've shared the ordinance with some, but we haven't heard anything concrete at this time of other jurisdictions formally bringing forward an ordinance. But if that is something that any of your board have received information from the jurisdictions that are in your district, and they would like more information, we're happy to be a resource.
I shared with you thoughts on the two incorporated in my area. And also, if I could go on to the next question about the locked containers. So no matter what, every tobacco product would have to be in a locked thing?
Yes.
Even if it's behind the counter?
Oh, no, no, if it's No, if it's behind the counter, it, it, so either it has to be locked or behind the counter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Either or?
Yes.
So they have an option?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, I appreciate the clarification. Almost caught me, myself on that.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you, and I appreciate this, and I'm looking forward to moving this forward. And, you know, we're, we're talking about potential edits to this in the future, I guess, in some regards. I mean, not necessarily this in particular, but we're talking, we had brought up other sort of behind-the-counter, youth-oriented drug issues we're trying to deal with, this and nitrous. But then also, the, and I forwarded you an article that was written by the, by the newspaper, by the student newspaper, Arcade High, and they were talking about zins. And it's basically, it's, and I don't know, do you consider it a tobacco product?
Yes.
That's what I was kind of wondering, because it just says it's nicotine-flavored packets for, you know, basically like, like for like chew kind of style, non-smokable. And so I was just wondering, does that, does that, is this covered under this ordinance?
Yeah, yes, it is. So it is, and I'm trying to, I don't know if we'll be able to quickly pull it up, the definition of tobacco product here does include nicotine products.
Okay.
And so that is something that has, any of the flavored versions of those products have been asked to been, you know, have been removed from the shelves. But, but there are non-flavored versions of that product that still would be on the shelves.
Interesting. Okay. Well, we'll have to maybe address that differently, depending on how it goes. But it seems like the flavored versions are the ones that the kids really like the most. It's the?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's good to know. I appreciate the response for that. Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
If I could just make one more comment, and this won't come to a surprise, as I spoke with you guys in our meeting, that the price for Humboldt County, I think it's $500 per retailer, correct?
That's including the initial application fee and then the annual license fee.
And the annual license fee is?
$390.
Okay. So and the state licensing fee is like two something? And so I'm just going to continue to advocate for the businesses in my community that have stated that this is a really big hardship for them. And if there is a way in the future to, and they're complying, as I've talked to you about, to do a sliding scale, I know you talked about that with our council. I don't think, that didn't work out. But in the future, if there is some way, especially those rural, rural small stores that there's one in 30 miles, it would be appreciated. You know, they're following the law. They're doing what they're supposed to. They, $500 to them is a lot, and some aren't being able to pay it, and you've heard that. So I just would appreciate if we could find any avenues.
Thank you.
Is there a way to find an avenue? I'm more worried about small retail, all the retailers
Sure.
countywide. Not, I've got some in my district, but I mean, countywide, they're all suffering. They're having a tough time. And we're raising fees on everything.
Yeah.
You know, and this is just, and I, I, I don't know what the state does for their money. And then I just, I just, I was just reading today in the paper that they did a, are we going to do sting operations? And, and are we going to go and inspect and make sure they're not, are we going to do all that? And we're only bringing in, are we bringing in enough money to cover all that on these fees?
I mean, frankly, we're, we're subsidizing to, to keep the cost of this low.
The taxpayers are subsidizing, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So this, this is not being paid full, at full cost by the retailers. And so that is, that is something that we did initially, you know, in, in conversations as we were developing this, that this was something that would be subsidized so that we could get this program off, off the ground. You know, there is a Department of Justice grant that's coming up. We are definitely looking at it and looking at all the different ways that we can use that to support, continue to support this work. We're currently working under a DOJ grant. And so we will definitely look to see if there's any avenues around that. But don't have anything concrete at this time.
So with the high rate cigarettes or next alcohol, you know, sin taxes, probably one of the highest taxable items there is, do we get anything back out of those taxes that go into the Fed and the state? We get taxes back, because I know we, we, it was mentioned first five and, and losing money there and everything else. Is that going to, are there funds there that are going to, you know, offset that? I think it's, it's noble that we're picking it up, but I think we get funded back for most of that, don't we?
So we do get some Prop 56 funds to do some tobacco education work, and Brianna can talk about that in a moment. But, you know, I think what, you know, you know, first five and others are seeing, you know, Prop 56, you know, as tobacco rates go down, obviously, that means that the funding pool goes down, right? So there's a challenge there for, you know, we're, we're seeing, you know, good headway in reducing, you know, tobacco use. But then what that means is that the revenue pool to support work like tobacco education or work, you know, with first five and others that benefit from Prop 56, then that becomes a dwindling, you know, funding source for that type of work. And Brianna, I don't know if you want to talk just really quickly about, you know, how we use Prop 56 in our program?
Sure. Prop 56 is used to do outreach and education in the community.
Oh, oh.
Thank you. Prop 56 is used to do outreach and education to the community at large about tobacco use reduction and preventing tobacco use in youth. I mean, that's true.
Yeah, because I've had, I've had signs out at the ballfields for 25 years that used to be paid for. I don't bill on them anymore. But I mean, you know, about tobacco-free and stuff. So I was just wondering what we're going to do, because I mean, smoking's dropped. I mean, since 2010 to 2023, I think half, 50%, they said, or something, big numbers. So.
And I think what's concerning is commercial tobacco is adaptive. And, you know, you, you know, just like Supervisor Wilson was talking about the zins products, which is, you know, it's, it's a nicotine product that gets youth addicted. I mean, that, that's the concern, is that the products will continue to evolve and adapt. And so that, that's part of why, you know, there's enforcement efforts that are happening across the state is so that, you know, we can try and be agile and respond to preventing another generation getting addicted to products that, that harm their health.
Supervisor Bushnell?
How do you address the, with this ordinance, the nicotine gum?
Well, so that nicotine product is defined under state law, under the flavor ban. I don't know if there's anything else anyone wants to add.
Also, if it's FDA-approved, it's not considered a tobacco product regulated by the local ordinance. And so nicotine gum is one of those products that is FDA-approved as a medicine for folks, and we wouldn't be regulating that.
Okay. So it's not, okay.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, and I mean, I understand the concerns about cost to retailers, but I just want to bring it back to the cost of the families, people of nicotine addiction in our communities. And I, I do find it disturbing that we, we're in a place where we feel like the services that a store would offer are predicated or somehow tied to this, you know, nicotine distribution in our community. The, I mean, I, if that's what's holding it together, then maybe we need to figure out a way to subsidize stores to have good products for our community versus having them have to rely on subsidies for, you know, distributing nicotine and other substances that are really bad for us. So that's just, I just, I feel like that's, that's a tough place to be. I get it, it's not just nicotine, there's alcohol in there, too, and those other things in which we all see are pervasive. I, I just, yeah, having two young people and seeing in my, in my house, and seeing where, and, and seeing sort of the, the drive within the social circles around these products, it is pretty intense. I mean, it's, it is very pervasive. And, and I'm finding just even more and more of younger people that I deal with, just, you know, in the community and around, like, how, how many of them are, are addicted to nicotine, to these products? Even though they may not be smoking cigarettes in the way they once were, it's pretty amazing, unexpected to me. So I'm, I'm grateful for this work that you guys are doing. I'm sure we'll find amendments in the future to find, whatever, to deal with this. And also, we probably, probably respond to new and innovative ways from the, from the nicotine industry as they seek to try and addict our children and our community. We really have to do what we can to respond to that. So, thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just want to, I know I asked a lot of questions, and so I just really want to say that I do support. And I'm not a tobacco user, and I don't even like being around it. But I do also, in that aspect, want to support the businesses and make it feasible for them. And they are trying to comply, and they are doing what the law provides, you know, with having it behind the counter and checking IDs and so forth and so on. And, and so it really is my intent to make the ordinance work well with the community and not have, you know, a store way out wherever that feels like they'd have no choice because they can't afford, you know, the regulation fees. And when it's more than the state, they don't understand, because ours is more than the state. And so I just do want to say that I am supportive of the ordinance and I'm glad and happy that you are hearing concerns and working those out as we go.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to add a little bit about, it's a pie in the sky and plant a seed about how DEH could grow the inventory potentially of tobacco retailers. And that's if we can enter into renewing contracts for DEH services with cities. And that's something we're working towards. And, and so this is a little bit of a tangential to this conversation, but the local ordinance, if cities feel like they could be supported by implementation from DEH within their jurisdictions, it potentially grows our inventory and expands that revenue and, and pays for the implementation of the program. So it may soften the effects in the rural parts of the county. But the goal is to create a revenue source to pay for the program. And currently, we're not there, but we're looking at opportunities to expand our inventory.
I, I don't know if they've shared with you the feelings of the two jurisdictions in my district, but there's not a lot of great talk right now about the ordinance and, and the way that it is hindering businesses, they feel, right now, because of, everything is increasing price-wise, and so they just feel like it's something else. And not to say that they don't want to comply, and that's what I was saying earlier. And so the, getting those cities to sign on, you know, I think that there's opportunity there. But I think it could create more problems as well with the cap on it. And do cities want to be capped on new stores opening? So I don't know if there is opportunity in there to adjust a little bit so that you could get those cities to sign on, because that would be great. And then it could soften the financial blow to all of Humboldt and level the playing field in, in the entire county. So thank you for that, Mario.
Thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion. Oh, wait, do we have? Okay, never mind. I'll wait.
Okay, we are on public speaking. We have caller 5288, star six, ten mute, and you will have three minutes.
Counselor, I've always, excuse me, always had a major problem with sin tax. Why, why should you be able to sin and pay money and then your sin's forgiven? There was a certain church that kind of had that, and I always had a problem with that particular concept, buying your way to eternity by paying a little bit of money. So I think regulation's better. I have no sympathy for anybody who's, who's engaged in selling this, a small business, buying something else to do. It doesn't require you to pay a sin tax. There's a reason for it, it's sending a message. Apparently, they're not listening to the message. I strongly, I think, I think Supervisor Bushnell brought this forward with the whip it thing, strongly support this. It's something that's timed, it's changed. There's a whole bunch of things out there in our world that we should not be enabling. And our health costs are through the roof. We all pay, I guess, a sin tax, so some people can go ahead and, and, and basically kill themselves. I don't feel like I should have to contribute that to anymore. Strongly support it. Whatever money you have to throw at this to make sure that this gets set up and done, and the children are protected. It's always about the children. If we can't protect the children, eventually, all the, all the people who are engaged in this particular stuff will die, probably will have them painfully and early. But that's, I guess, a consequence of poor decisions. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And that is the only caller.
I'm going to make, if I could make the motion for the chair? I'd make the motion that we approve staff recommendation. I do want to say this is not a sin tax what's being discussed. It's a fee for service that's actually subsidized by the county, and actually lose money on this deal. So with that, I still, I support this. And, yeah, with staff recommendation. That's my motion.
One second.
Yes?
Yes.
So we're voting on the amendments, correct? That's, okay.
Yes.
On staff recommendation, thank you.
Yes.
I, I read them. I'm clarifying for the public that the tack, this ordinance is already out there. This is to clean up the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for the vote? All right. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you for your support.
I think they might. That's why they call it sin tax, though. I mean, it's, it's just a terminal.